Okay, are we ready to go? Let's, all right, welcome everybody. I will call to order this Monday, May 5th, 2025, work session of the Westland City Council. Lots on the agenda today, including lots of proclamations for the month of May. First item is to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the May 5th Council Work Session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the May 5th City Council Work Session. Any discussions? Seeing no discussion, please call the roll, please. Thank you.
Councilor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councilor Bright?
Yes.
Council President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielstoski?
Yes. So the motion passes and the agenda is approved. And the next item is public comments of, do we have any public comments today?
Not at this time, but one later.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. We will then move on into Mayor and Council reports for community advisory groups or city business in general. Councilor Bright, please.
I attended the South Fork Water Board Budget Committee meeting and the budget was approved as presented and will be in front of the South Fork Water Board Board on May 28th to, for adoption.
Thank you. Council President Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also did attend that South Fork Water Board Budget Meeting. I also, on Wednesday, the 30th, spent the day in Salem along with members of the Lox Authority, including former Mayor Russ Axelrod and a very frequent volunteer for the city, Sandy Carter. And we were asking, and Metro Councilor Christine Lewis, we were asking for funding completion for our opening, reopening of the locks. And so we saw, we had 12 meetings. And then I jumped in my car and drove to North Bend and went to the Lake of Oregon Cities Conference, which was Thursday and Friday. And that was really fabulous. It's so good to meet with and kind of reacquaint myself with our council colleagues from other cities and hear what's going on around the state. I attended several workshops and sessions about counselor, communication with staff, code enforcement on a tight budget, legislative updates. There are 600 approximately of the 3,000 bills introduced in this session still moving forward, including several we are tracking. And I also got to tour the Coast Guard hangar, which was fascinating. If I wasn't already completely geeked out on first responders, I'm completely a lost cause now because I got to look at all the equipment and wear a helmet and there will be photos. Okay. And then on Saturday, when I rushed back home and was here bright and early Saturday morning, went to the Tryon Creek Park Indigenous Culture Day, which was a wonderful experience of indigenous foods, crafts, and language exhibits. And I got to meet even more of our wonderful local native members of our tribes from the area. And it was just wonderful. So that's about all. And then yesterday I rested.
I think based on your report, you earned that day of rest, Council President. Thank you. I have my, my brief report is I attended the South Fork Water Board Meeting, a meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, which is a group of all the regional mayors, talked about the legislative agenda and state, the metro housing policy discussions that are ongoing. Met with the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Chachin Craig. And one other highlight was I attended a swearing in for a new Westland Police Department Officer, which was a wonderful occasion as well. And then, of course, spending a lot of time today and tomorrow getting ready for the State of the City event, which is tomorrow night at Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the library. If folks don't know already, but I think folks who are paying attention have seen all the announcements about the State of the City event. So looking forward to that and there will be food afterwards. So if that draws anybody else in, that's going to be great. Looking forward to that with all the, my council colleagues and staff. So with that, Council Groner does not have reports, so we'll go to Council, Councilor Bonnington, please.
I have kind of a unique one. My, my dear old friend from Ireland was here as a groomsman in my sister's wedding and he works for their Department of Defense. So I set him up with a police ride along and they had a very interesting discussion about their policies and tactics back and forth. But what I really thought stood out to me was when I picked him up, he was just glowing about how these guys are enhancing your community in so many ways. They are just so wonderful. And from a European perspective, where maybe, you know, there's a lot of misconceptions or stereotypes about what American policing is, I thought that was pretty cool. So, good for our cops.
That's awesome. Great report. Thank you for the kind words there from your friend. Anything, any other reports tonight, everybody? Okay. Well, with that, we've got five proclamations to get through for the month of May and possibly another one coming up next week as well. So we'll begin with a Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. And I know we have a guest from NAMI, Gary Marskey is here. I'm going to let Council President read the proclamation. You can come up and then afterwards we'll recognize you for your brief presentation. Perfect. You, you go ahead and you can read the proclamation. Yes, that's the first one on the agenda anyway. So then, then we'll turn, they have a brief presentation. Go ahead and can read the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas since its inception in 1949, Mental Health Awareness Month has been a cornerstone of addressing the challenges faced by millions of Americans living with mental health conditions. And whereas, mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas, everyone experiences times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times. And whereas, engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illness as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral health risks and supports specific tools that all can use to protect their health and well-being. And whereas, with effective treatment, individuals with mental illnesses can make progress toward recovery and lead full productive lives. And whereas, jails and prisons have often become the default places of custodial care for even nonviolent people with serious mental illness. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and community member has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of West Lynn that May 2025 is Mental Health Awareness Month. We call upon the community, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our community can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Dated this day, this day of May, 2025. And I would, if, if I may, just for a moment, add a personal note that my mother suffered from probably undiagnosed or misdiagnosed mental illness most of my life. And although she was a lovely person who worked very hard, it was a struggle that has traumatized my sister and myself. And I am still recovering from all of that. And so everyone needs to understand that it's real and that you can still succeed and, and enjoy a full life, but getting help is very important. And that is all I'll say on that.
Thank you, Council President, for that heartfelt, personal note. And with that, I want to turn it over to Gary Marskey from the National Alliance on Mental Illness.
For each of you? Yep. This is a genuine Nami Clackamas stress ball. This little bugger is guaranteed, I have some for YouTube. These are guaranteed to remove all stress.
Thank you.
So, and thank you very much, Westland City Council, for this opportunity. Really do appreciate it. And what I'm going to do is just take you through a brief overview of Nami Clackamas and a little bit about the need for what, what we do. So, okay, so let's see, what do we got? So first question I've got for you is, what do you think is the average time between the time someone suspects they might have a mental health issue and the time that they actively seek help? I'm taking guesses.
Three years.
Three years. Up.
10 years.
Okay, close. It's 11 years. 11 years between the time that you realize you might have an issue and the time that you actively seek help. The reason for that, primarily, it's not really access, it's not really cost, it's stigma. Okay, the stigma of mental health. So what do we do about that? We need to change the conversation. We need to talk about mental health. We need to ask the question, are you okay? Don't seem to be yourself. Is there anything I can do? We need to change the language. We need to stop referring to people as having committed suicide and start talking about the fact that they ended their life. Okay, they died by suicide, but they didn't commit a sin or a crime. Okay, it's not that stigma that goes along with it. Even though it's not a desirable outcome, we really don't want to stigmatize it. Also changing the language around how we refer to someone with a mental health issue. We don't refer to them as their disease anymore than we refer to somebody as having, as being cancer or diabetes. And what they are is they have a disease that they deal with. It is not who they are. The sooner we can separate them from the disease, the easier it is for them to recover and for us to support them in their recovery. And what that all does is it really does change the perception around mental health and mental illness. It allows people to share their stories and also to let people know that recovery is likely. It's more likely that you will recover from a mental health issue than it is from diabetes, cancer, or heart disease. Understanding recovery from a mental health issue is a process, not necessarily an outcome. There isn't a cure. And all of those things change the outcome and they allow us to stop the stigma, take that 11 years, and maybe we can pare it down to 11 months, 11 weeks, maybe even 11 days. Okay, that would be ideal. And that allows people to seek the help that they really need. So, has anybody here had an experience with NAMI? I know you've had an experience with mental health issues. So let me tell you what NAMI is. Okay, what we are is we are one of almost 700 affiliates around the country, each broken down by county. We are Clackamas County. That's because we get most of the healthcare funding through the county and that's why we're affiliated by county. We get only roughly about 15% of our annual budget from the county. The rest of it comes from grants and individual fundraising. We really do appreciate the fact that peer support is what we're all about and that saves lives. We've been at this since 1978. It's evidenced by the tie-dyed fashion sense in that photograph up there. So that's testimony to the fact we've been at this for that long. We have got a lot of success stories. My favorite one is the shortest one up top, that NAMI support groups have brought me out of a foggy, depressed existence that improved my quality of life. And that's our mission, is to improve the quality of life for anyone impacted by a mental health issue. So what do we do? We have classes. We have a peer-to-peer class for individuals with mental health issues. Eight weeks, they work on a recovery plan and they look at, look, work on understanding their diagnosis. You have no idea, I didn't, how many people have a diagnosis and don't understand it. They don't know what's going on. Family-to-family is eight weeks class for family members, loved ones, anybody who cares for or about somebody with a mental health issue. Again, they work on self-care because it's really important for a caregiver, but also they work on understanding the diagnosis that their loved one has. And empathy, a lot of empathy-building exercises in that class. And then NAMI Basics, which is for parents and caregivers of younger children. We know that there's lots of developmental issues that can often get confused with a mental health issue or they could mask a mental health issue. So we kind of need to know how to tell the difference. We also need to know how to advocate for that youngster because in spite of our best efforts, it's still not a system that is really accommodating to younger folks, especially in the schools. So we really do need to educate the parents and caregivers and help them advocate for their youngsters. We also have support groups. We have three weekly support groups for individuals with mental health issues, three monthly support groups for family members. We have a queer support group, LGBTQIA2S+. A Latinx support group, women-only support group. We have a suicide bereavement group for folks that have lost someone to suicide and a compassionate friends group for families who have lost a child. Those are all regular weeks. We also have two weekly book clubs. We also have a peer support special. We have three of them on staff and their job is to connect you as an individual with a mental health issue or a family member with the resources that you need to help you locate those resources and then connect with them. And they work with you every step of the way. They don't leave you alone after they give you the number to call, but they're with you every step. And they'll stay with you for a year or more, doesn't really matter, there's no time limit. So they will work with you to help you get what you need. And people in crisis don't need to deal with some bureaucracy and that's really what we can help with, is be that bridge. We also have special projects in the Clackamas County Jail. We have a regular weekly class for adults in custody and a weekly support group for adults in custody in the Clackamas County Jail. Jails have become housing now for people in crisis because there's no real housing opportunities for folks. So that's why we're in the jails and hopefully we'll, you know, take care of the housing issue. But in the meantime, we're in the jails because that's where the need is. We also have free presentations that we do, Lunch and Learns, In Our Own Voice, one of my favorite community presentations, The Ultimate Empathy Builder, Ending the Silence, goes into middle and high school classes where we help the youngsters understand a little bit more about mental illness and how to help their friends. So we do a lot of community presentations. I've done myself literally 60-plus a year over the last two years. So we really do get out and try and spread the word. We have our upcoming issue, Conference Parenting and Mental Health with the Oregon City School District coming up on May 31st. We have our family-to-family class online or in-person, sorry, in Milwaukee, Oregon City. Wow. Okay, I'll get this straight. Starting in May. And then we have a Queer Connection Support Group that's also starting up in May. So those are some of the current events that we've got. The best part about everything that we do is there's no diagnosis, no insurance, no referral, no cost involved. It's all about access. World's worst business model, which is why we do fundraising. Stand-ups Against Stigmas, our comedy night in March. NAMI Walks is coming up, May 17th. There's information in that packet I gave you about NAMI Walks. We have our Party with a Purpose Dinner Auction in September. Love to have you come out and enjoy celebrating mental health and bidding on things you didn't know you need. Champion Circle is our monthly financial support group, so we'd love to have you be a part of that as well. Those are some of the things that we do for fundraising. Also on the back of that NAMI Walks piece of paper is our theater night. Thanks to Clackamas Repertory Theater, we have a theater night on Thursday, it's June 26th, where all the proceeds from the tickets that are bought will go to NAMI Clackamas. So thank you, Clackamas Repertory Theater. It's Sherlock Holmes in the precarious position. Supposed to be a real laugh riot. Our volunteers we get, we love volunteers, we use them all the time. We use them to teach, to facilitate, do all kinds of things. Have lots of volunteer opportunities available. We also have opportunities to sign up for our newsletter. You'll get a copy of the, this presentation. There's a QR code that will help you sign up for our newsletter. And that's it for me. Anybody have any questions about anything that I covered?
First of all, thank you for the presentation and for all your work.
You're very welcome.
On the topic, I know especially nowadays, mental, mental health issues are on the rise and I've heard especially with our, with students and it's been an important topic in schools lately especially. And just appreciate all your work and happy to, as a city, partner with NAMI however we can to provide event space, things like that for.
Careful, we'll take you up on.
For events. No, seriously. It's very important and so we just appreciate that. And now that I've given people time to think of their questions or comments, please, like, open the floor up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say thank you also. And I don't really have a question, but I'm very excited to see some of these events and I'm already mentally putting them on my calendar. Thank you.
I'd love to see any and all of you at any of our events.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council?
Just wanted to thank you for the presentation. You're succinct and very much to the point and very much needed.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I guess one question I have is just with some of the federal funding issues that have been coming out of Washington DC, is, is NAMI Clackamas having any loss of funding?
At this point, no. At this point, we're actually looking at a slight increase in our funding from the county. But you never know. I mean, there's a trickle-down, so as the mental health funding continues to be cut, we could be seeing some, some impacts. But again, we get less than 15% of our funding from the government, so that puts us in a better position at least than a lot of others who have major contracts.
Keep all the cities posted.
We sure will.
As that develops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Great rest of your day and celebrate Mental Health Month.
Thank you. We will. Thank you. Thanks for the stress ball. This can be useful for city council meetings at times. Well, with that, we'll move on to a proclamation too. Congenital Disorders of Glycosylation, which will be read by Councilor Bonnington and we do this every month to honor the family of a city staff member. We appreciate that.
All right.
Every year, excuse me. Go ahead. Every year.
Whereas, Congenital Disorders of Glycosylation, CDGs Day, is May 16th, the birthday of Jake, Jakon, the medical doctor who reported the first CDG patients in 1980. And whereas, CDGs are a group of rare metabolic disorders that affect normal organ development and the neurological system, leaving children, adolescents, and adults impaired with significant physical and developmental disability. And whereas, lack of public awareness and visibility of CDGs contributes to underdiagnosis and difficulties in accessing specialized services and proper rehabilitation and support. And whereas, early diagnosis of CDGs is important to ensure timely management of clinical complications, genetic counseling, and where available, treatment and therapeutic remedies. And whereas, the goal is to raise awareness and increase accurate and timely diagnosis of this rare group of inherited metabolic disorders known as CDGs. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of West Lynn that May 16th, 2025, is Congenital Disorders of Glycosylation Awareness Day.
Thank you, Councilor Bonnington, for that. And the next proclamation is Jewish American Heritage Month, to be read by Council Groner.
Thank you. Whereas, in 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month to recognize more than 350 years of Jewish contribution to the United States and its culture. And whereas, Jewish Americans have significantly shaped the social, cultural, economic, and civic life of Oregon, enriching our communities as leaders in education, business, arts, medicine, public service, and social justice. And whereas, Jewish American Heritage Month offers a meaningful opportunity to recognize, honor, and celebrate the enduring contributions of Jewish Americans to our nation, our state, and our local communities throughout history. And whereas, Jewish American Heritage Month, we honor timeless traditions and contributions of Jewish Americans and acknowledged all they have done to enrich our community. And whereas, the City of West Lynn embraces the diverse backgrounds and experiences that make our city stronger and encourages all residents to celebrate the history and contributions of Jewish Americans while promoting unity, understanding, and mutual respect among all peoples. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of West Lynn that the month of May, 2025, is Jewish American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Groner, for that. And I will read National Police Week and the Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas, in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And, and whereas, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency in the City of West Lynn play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community members. And whereas, it is important that all community members know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. And whereas, members of our department recognize the duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service to our community. And so now there, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of West Lynn that May 11th to 17th, 2025, is National Police Week and May 15th is National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And we extend our appreciation to Police Chief Peter Mahuna and to all the men and women of our police department for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our West Lynn community dated this 5th day of May, 2025. Thank you, everybody. Happy National Police Week. And with that, we have one more celebratory week, which is National Public Works Week, to be read by Councilor Bright with her background in the water industry.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, National Public Works Week was instituted in 1960 by the American Public Works Association to call attention to the importance of public works programs supporting local communities. And the United States Senate passed a resolution affirming the first National Public Works Week. And whereas, this year's theme is People, Purpose, Presence. And whereas, public works contributes to advancing and enhancing our quality of life, no matter where we live in the world. And whereas, public works professionals provide essential services that lead to healthier, happier, more vibrant communities. And whereas, the People, Purpose, Presence theme highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve their communities every day. Public works is ever-present, working in the background to advance quality of life for all. Whereas, we invite the community to join us in celebrating the quiet work these professionals do that help make life better for all of us. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of West Lynn that May 18th to 24, 2025, is National Public Works Week, dated this 5th day of May, 2025.
Thank you, Council Bright. Thank you, everybody, for the proclamations today. That was great. And speaking of public works, we're, we have to talk about the Public Works Operations Center, which is a very exciting project for our city. And so I'll turn it over to the city manager to introduce the staff for the city operations complex design update.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. We'll invite Eric and the team, however many of the team is coming up. And Eric, can you introduce your folks? Just as a reminder, as it says in the council packet, this is a project that is related to two city council priorities. The operations center itself, also sustainable operations and facilities here at the city. And we're really excited to have this joint presentation. I have to say, I love all of our packet items, but the renderings in here are some of the most exciting items we have had in a packet for a while. It's really, really good to see the progress being made forward. So Eric, can you take it from here, please?
Thank you, John. Mayor, city councils, thanks for having us today. Thank you for the Public Works Proclamation as well. Myself, along with staff, appreciate it. So to get started today, I have Jeff Dunn from Scott Edwards Architecture, along with Brendan Dole. He's hanging out in the, in the audience if we need to poll the audience. He's on standby there. So, anyway, just wanted to give an update on where we are with design. If you recall, we brought SCEA, easier to say, on in the spring of '23, moving towards final design with them in July of last year. And since then, we're roughly 70% design completion. Also this week, we're, group of us are scoring submittals for CMGC, Construction Manager General Contractor, which is exciting. We had 14 applicants put in some really big national firms, along with some reputable local Northwest firms. So we're pretty excited about the opportunity to bring that firm on to take the design over the finish line and then into construction. and then into construction, hopefully later later this year. So anyway, I guess we can you do you want to just flip through it? Okay. Will you go to the next one, please? So today, we're going to talk a little bit about our project approach. As John said, we have some renderings layout of the design. And then we're going to talk about environmental design features that have been incorporated into the into the project. I think maybe if you push it over there, usually you have to put. So some of our environmental features, first one was to preserve and celebrate the wetland in the ravine that are on site. Pretty exciting stuff there, the wetland. And Jeff will go into more detail on these as we go ahead on this. Number two is the we're looking at mass plywood or laminated timber for structural and roof panel systems. I think preliminary, we're looking at the administration building. But moving ahead, I think we're going to try for all the buildings, photovoltaic arrays for solar energy over the warehouse and carport buildings. That'll be a nice added feature there. And again, Jeff will get into more detail here in a minute. Smaller separate buildings, the initial concept of this building was one building that housed all the warehouses and shops, along with the administration building. Due to the presence of the wetlands, we chose to work around that rather than mitigate it and move it. And so that's resulted in three individual buildings. And then selective preservation and protection of existing trees on site.
Thank you. Hi. It's really exciting to be here. So thanks for having me. And I'm just going to add some more detail in terms of the kind of environmental design features of the operations complex project. So like Eric said, we have a large wetland that you can see. It's delineated in blue in the kind of dashed line in the kind of lower right of that image. And way back when, we were marching along and we had a building that was designed kind of across it, actually, schematically. And we chose to switch tracks on that. And instead of seeing the wetland as something that was a challenge or a problem, we chose to celebrate it. So we moved the buildings and we broke them up into three pieces, like Eric said. So you can see the three structures in that site plan. Oh, thank you. The red one? Yeah. Yeah. So there's the wetland there in blue. And then there's a kind of buffer offset. We're staying mostly out of the buffer, but completely out of the wetland. So we see the wetland as something that the buildings can now look onto from inside and enjoy the views of. And also just kind of as a kind of community education piece for wetlands and what they are and what they do in an environment. So we're really excited about that piece of the project. There's also a ravine on site. We've got a lot of things to work around on this part. There's a ravine over here, which is also being preserved. So there's an offset for that as well. So it's really kind of threading the needle with this with this road off of Salamo that will lead you down, kind of welcome you at the administrative building there. And then there's two buildings, a warehouse and a kind of fleet maintenance building at that lower lot. I'll advance to the next.
And jump in anytime if anybody, anyone has any questions.
Yes, could you go back to the diagram?
Yeah.
Think you can do it because it's a PDA.
Yeah. What are those rectangles in the upper right? Are those material storage areas?
Yeah. So that's decant, de-watering. There's some material storage, covered material storage. There's a little car wash up there.
Fueling, our fuel station will be up there.
And in the materials, maintenance, the maintenance building, what are those little rectangles on the upper part of the diagram of that building?
Um.
Small squares.
Oh, these up here?
Yeah.
So that's an outdoor. So it's open air, but it's covered parking. And you'll see in some of the subsequent slides, that's where a substantial part of our photovoltaic solar cells are going to be mounted to the roof of that because they're going to be angled toward the southern exposure of sun.
Just trying to understand the diagram.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. So yeah, warehouse building, carport with parking underneath, covered parking, kind of a large paved area for more parking, and then obviously truck movements. And then the fleet maintenance building, which is loosely connected to the upper building here, which is the administrative building, offices, conferencing, lobby, break spaces, things like that. So again, from an environmental design kind of perspective, this this image kind of looks at the CLT or cross laminated timber components of the project. So like Eric said, one of the buildings right now, the one in the kind of left image, is the administrative office building. And we're designing it to be a completely what they call mass plywood CLT system. So all wood for the columns and beams, and also all wood for the roof system. So there's a really good carbon story there. You can substantially reduce your carbon footprint by building out of wood than steel or concrete. And so that's a nice sustainable design feature. On the image on the right is another kind of exciting one. Eric and the team and a few people from S E A toured the Frers Mass Plywood Lumber Fabrication Facility in Lyons, Oregon. So we don't know, because of contracting reasons, exactly where the material is going to come from, but they'd be a really good candidate. And all of their material is sourced within 100 miles of their facility. So it's local labor, it's local material, and it's far more sustainable than steel or concrete.
And that was a neat feature. I wasn't familiar. Obviously, I'm familiar with laminated timber, glue lamps, and so on. But I'd never heard of the mass plywood. And it was taking the tour really brought to light how intricate and compared to a steel fabricated warehouse, seeing their big, huge warehouse that's all made out of mass plywood really brings a warmth to the building. And we're pretty excited about the opportunities there. You know, we'll know more later as far as cost, but it sounds like there's significant cost savings there along with the environmental components as well. But very, very neat feature, and I hope I hope it works out.
Yeah, building with CLT is becoming much more widely used than it used to be. And so general contractors and clients are finding ways, usually especially in schedule, recouping schedule, that they can save a lot more money than they used to. It used to be a lot more expensive, but it's becoming much more competitive, especially with the mass ply now. Okay, so feature three. Again, Eric already kind of summarized these, but I'll just give a little more detail. So you can see in the building A there, the southern aspect of the sloped roof has is completely covered in solar panels, as well as the cover for the carport is also completely covered in solar panels. And typically, the way we do that is about aspect. So it's finding the sun and sloping them and whatever, however many panels we need, we choose the southernmost aspect typically. So we have about 250 panels in the design currently. And of course, this is, this will be proven out, but we estimate that this will provide around 133,000 kilowatt hours per year in clean green energy for the project. So that's super exciting as well. That's as part of Oregon's GET program.
And it's just as a reference, we prior to coming in, I had the question. So we went to chat GPT and asked how many, how much power is 133,000 kilowatt hours? And that's roughly enough homes, power for to power 13 homes for a year. So it's substantial.
Yeah, it's a significant amount of power. Point four has to do with kind of fitness and emphasizing movement. So if you go for lead credits on a project, which I'll get into later, emphasizing physical movement is often a priority for projects like these. So instead of emphasizing the elevator, there is an elevator in this project because we need one for ADA purposes. But we have a series of paths along the kind of eastern and southeastern aspects of the of the maintenance building and the administrative office building so that people can actually enjoy the views of the wetlands and get outside and move with their bodies rather than taking the elevator for trips around the complex. And then point five is the last of that we'll talk about. There's other sustainable features of the project, but these are the big ones. We have chosen to preserve a number. There's a number of really beautiful old coniferous and deciduous trees on the site. Because of the grading, there's about an 80-foot drop from the top to the bottom of the site. We will be forced to remove a fair amount of them as a kind of necessary practicality of the grading of this kind of project. But we have worked with our landscape design team and our civil engineers to optimize that grading. So where there are places where the grading works out within an acceptable range, we're going to try to keep as many of those large trees as we can because of, I mean, the carbon story, but also just because they're beautiful. And they'll add to the design and the place making for the project. So then a quick description of LEED. So I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with LEED. I'm assuming fairly familiar. But in case not, LEED stands for Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design. And it's a matrix of essentially a point system that you can get for building projects that give you a certain spectrum of sustainability. So you can be a LEED certified project, and the points are described at the bottom of the black bar there. If you get above 40, you're certified. If you get above 50, you're silver. Above 60, you're gold. And above, I think it's 80, you're a platinum certified project. So you've probably seen buildings around that have those designations.
Yes, please. How do I read the totals on the bottom? There's green, black, and red totals. Seems to me the red are negative, but.
Yeah, good question. So the green column. So what we did, just to back out for a second, we this is just a test. So we are not going down the path of LEED for this particular project. It's expensive. But this is this is a quick reading of what if we did, because we anticipated that this body may be interested in knowing what that might look like. So this is not definitive, just to be clear. The green are points that we believe we have currently as designed in the projects, points that we would just scoop up because of the things that we've already accomplished due to building code, due to the GET program, due to decisions that Eric and his team have already made. The yellow column are points that we might get with a little bit more money and a little bit more energy or kind of like a push in that direction if we were, you know, if we're really going to go for a LEED rating on this project. The red orangish column, the last one, are points that we probably couldn't get no matter what. They're just either because of the site or where the project's located or other parameters, likely we just wouldn't achieve those. So what we did is in the near the black bar, kind of on the right of the slide at the bottom, we think we have 21 points in the green column right now. The threshold would be 40 to get to a certified project. We think we have 52 maybes. So, you know, like, let's say you got half of those 52, you would already be a certified project and actually headed towards silver. And then the last column are just points we don't think it could get. But we just wanted to paint a picture of kind of where the project sits, because we think it's fairly ambitious, actually, already. And then where it sits in the spectrum of LEED, because LEED is often a metric used to describe these kind of environmentally focused projects.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that answers your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We did ask, this is again anecdotal, but I asked around our office because we go through this process a lot in our office on all kinds of projects. It's for context, running around $100,000 for a project of this size for the registration, the documentation, for someone to go through the process of getting it certified, just for some context there.
So we're looking at it with the idea of using these good environmental decisions, but not necessarily going through the official paperwork of applying for a LEED certification?
That's been the mantra, yes. Is that fair? Okay. Okay. And then I just, I wanted to add a slide about energy because I know electrification has been a topic in many of these circles around environmental design. So just quickly, it's not out of the picture. Like, it's designed with electrical systems and natural gas currently. That's mostly because of the needs of some of buildings A and B, so the warehouse and the fleet maintenance building, gas-fired heaters in those spaces, as well as a radiant floor system. So obviously, those could be engineered differently. It'd be slightly more expensive on a month-by-month basis. But building C, the administrative office building, is already designed as an all-electric heating and cooling system. It's a VRF system. I don't need to get into the details necessarily of how that works, but it's all, there's a lot of systems in the project that are already electric. So it's not sort of unattainable to be all-electric. It would just be a bit more expensive. And then I think there's also a kind of redundancy in terms of energy perspective on it as well.
Yeah, we wanted to design this facility with redundant systems. For example, in the ice storm in '21, I believe we were 10 days before we could get fuel in order to run the generator. So just having the generator, I think we're sizing it for three-day runtime, but we're looking at locating it near our actual gas fuel station so that it's also connected to the 3,000 gallons of diesel for use. And again, like Jeff said, it's not unattainable to be all-electric. It's just not the most efficient in those large warehouse buildings to have the radiant heat, let's say, be all be all-electric. And again, when he the floors aren't going to be heated in all of the warehouse buildings, just the the maintenance shops for fleet maintenance and so forth. And again, the I'm not an expert in mechanical and plumbing, but that's having all-electric radiant floor heating, as we're told, is not the most efficient. So.
Oh, go ahead, please.
I know that PGE has had programs working with governments to provide maintenance exercising of and fuel for large generators. When I worked at Clarkamas River Water, we had one for the water treatment plant. We also had one for a pump station. And it's a really kind of a sweet deal. I don't know how many of those PGE is doing, and I don't know if anybody has talked to them to see if they can get, it's a shared, I can't remember the name of it now, but it any excess power that can be generated can go back into the grid. That's what PGE gets out of it. But the owner of the generator gets first priority. So if the power's out, the electricity would go to the shop.
Yeah. Sounds like a similar program. We're taking part with PG right now with our Bolton Pump Station, which is our largest user, to where we do similar to domestic use, where we don't use it during peak times, and then we get a rebate. where we don't use it during peak times, and then we get a rebate back.
That's kind of it in terms of the big picture. Obviously, we'll be before you again in a few months to discuss the project in more detail. We've obviously kept this presentation focused on the environmental design aspects, which obviously are a big design driver. And then I've just included a series of renderings and plans here at the end if, if, if necessary. So yeah, we're really excited about the project. Thank you for your questions and your interest.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council on the, on the topic? And let me just start by asking, are you asking for any, from the staff perspective, direction from us or decision points? Or is this more of an informational briefing?
This was more of an informational briefing to update council. I understand that, and I'm not sure if anybody from the Sustainability Board is here, if they have comments or questions.
They're in the back and they've been taking notes.
Yeah.
Greg, would you like to come up? Come on up, why, why not? Is you, are you okay? Okay.
And while Greg comes up, I guess I would say we're not seeking any specific direction, but if there's, if there's elements of what you're seeing that you particularly like or do not like, we would love to know as early as possible about that. The project, as Eric has told you, the project is, continues to move forward. So this would be a great time to provide feedback to bend the arc one way or the other and ask questions of our great team, including maybe pulling someone up in the audience who hasn't had to do that yet.
So my name's Greg Smith, Sustainability Advisory Board. I think, I appreciate, you know, all of your attention to the landscape and with the preserving as much as you can of the site where the building is being located. I think my primary question has to do with actually whether or not you'll be providing an infrastructure that would allow for the charging of EVs and that are kind of tied into the Parks Department as well as, as the building and engineering, as well as places where it would be possible to charge batteries that would be used for landscaping equipment in the Parks Department. I think we're kind of hoping that the city moves in those directions. But to really make it workable, it would be essential to have a building where those type of things are easily available as well as, you know, if there's enough electrical power to really make it happen in a sustainable way. So is that part of the plan?
Yes. Right now, we have, I think, I can't remember the number, but we have EV charging stations for vehicles as part of the parking plan. I think we have two or four spaces.
I want to say four. I think two up top and then two, two down below.
How many vehicles does the city own that are used for the Parks Department as well? So the public?
Oh, boy. It's over 100. I, it's, we have a master list, but I'm, I don't know how it breaks down with just vehicles. We do have four all-electric vehicles in the fleet.
Could you come up, please? Could you come up? Sorry, we have to capture this into the record of the meeting. And Greg has raised some good, good questions, and I don't know if we have all the answers today, but it sounds like you're working on.
I apologize, Mayor and Council. Brandon Dole with SCA, Scott Edwards Architecture. I was going to just give you the information you're looking for. We plan on putting a lot of infrastructure in the ground. So right now, there isn't a lot of demand in terms of fleet from the city. The fleet, you know, hundreds of vehicles, lots of parts and pieces from a push mower all the way from a, you know, VAC contract that they drive. But the intent is to put conduit in the ground. So as their fleet becomes more electrified, we can put more charging stations and the ability to take that on. So I think we're headed in the right direction.
And I guess my question again is, how many, how many conduits?
Oh, I couldn't quote, but we're planning for future growth to put, the intent is that PG&E would come and put in infrastructure, and then we would have conduits in the ground. I don't know how many exactly we have intended because we haven't gone that far in the design, but we will use our cracked and clouded, you know, crystal ball to get as far as we can on day one.
I've visited an apartment house that's been built over in Tiger that had done exactly the same thing. But they're attemptless to be able to provide conduits and, and charging stations. More than the majority of the residents of that apartment house. But it seems like we have, you know, 100 vehicles, if not more. And we're really kind of moving towards electric vehicles in 25 to 30 years. And I'm assuming that this building is, will be kind of used for at least that long.
Oh, and longer.
Really ought to be thinking about enough charging stations for the vehicles that we'll be needing 30 to 40 years from now, the majority of which will have to be electric.
Yeah, what we're seeing in the industry is, is still fairly limited in terms of electrification on vehicle side. We mostly see like F-150, you know, lightning trucks. On the equipment, it's slowly coming. I was actually, I've been in conferences the last two weeks in Washington, Oregon, specifically for Public Works. And we are seeing some larger equipment coming. It's not as readily available and it's not as efficient. So like a street sweeper is something that we're starting to see is as big as it will get. So it is out there. The goal right now is to allow the flexibility right down the line to add. There's a little bit of back and forth with PG&E in these instances. PG&E doesn't want to put infrastructure in the ground that they're not going to utilize on day one. So there's a little bit of a game, right? So again, we're, you know, we're, we're looking at how do we get the meth the most on day one in terms of that infrastructure? And then in time, adding to it.
It seems like it's having.
Yes, definitely.
No, you raised a good points about the conduit and charging, and that's important to all of us as well because we all want to make sure we're prepared for an electrical future. So do you have any final comments? We could also ask that the briefing be given to the Sustainability Advisory Board if it hasn't already in the coming months.
The only concern that I had about the building was that it'd really be functional in the event of like more ice storms or, you know, an earthquake.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
You.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So I guess the question is, will, how functional will the building be in the event of like another ice storm or an earthquake? And so I think it'll really be essential that the city be able to respond to those kinds of events. And so I just, you know, one, two days is what it sounds like the generator would be able to, to produce powerful. Or are there other alternatives that you could pursue to make sure that the building would be, could be a central agent in the response to those kinds of disasters?
Yes, yes. And I think redundancy and resiliency are big components of environmental design, right? And so, yeah, so right now, we have a generator size to keep the administrative slash office building fully functional, lighting, computers, hot water, showers for a minimum of three days. And that's a three days of being completely sort of maxed out. So ultimately, it's more than that. And like Eric was saying, we've also combined the generator fuel capacity with the fueling station tank. So that could continue to get refilled, right? To extend the downtime even further. And it's going to power lighting across the site, so site lighting as well. So it's safe to get in and out. So if you have trucks or vehicles or service things that need to get in and out of the site, they can continue to do that during a, during an ice storm or during a power outage. So yeah, lots of kind of redundancy. There's also redundancy, I mean, that's part of the power question is if you have a couple different power sources, it's arguable that it's redundant power systems as well, electrical and natural gas. So there's also kind of passive systems in the project. So like, there's a lot of daylighting that's being used, especially in the administrative office building. So even if the power went out, even if the generator didn't work, you'd still have most of the building lit by just natural means, at least during the daytime hours. So there's kind of multiple levels of redundancy and resiliency that we're building into it.
Yeah, I guess I really would encourage you to think about more time, just given the fact that power could be out for weeks in the event of an earthquake and, you know, even a week and a half for the ice storm. So, so just keep those, those ideas.
Great thoughts, great thoughts and ideas.
Thank you.
On the topic. And thanks for coming up and asking some good questions for, for the meeting. I'm going to turn now to Council President Baumgarten, who has a few questions or thoughts. And if the Sustainability Advisory Board would like to have a further discussion on the topic, we could definitely schedule that with consultant, consultant team. Please, Council President.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate the time and your presentation. I wanted to, first of all, appreciate some of the environmental considerations, the wetland at least. I'm also curious about the site preparation with regard to the ratio of removal of vegetation that will be required. Basically, it's a big sloped grassland, which, right next to a freeway. So the fire concern, I would say, I'm not a professional, is greater than zero. So will there need to be major removal of vegetation to harden the site for potential wildfire risk management? And I'm curious, I have another question that's really kind of a bigger question. I keep on coming back to the, the property nearby, which is owned by ODOT also, and the potential for partnering with ODOT. I think it would be a great place for long-haul truck rest stop overnight, stop. I know these are kind of big concepts, so I apologize for that, but that's just the way my brain works. So here we go. There's also the rest area that is no longer in use, that's just to the east of this property, that still has potentially egress onto and off of the freeway, southbound lanes of I-205 there. Or maybe it could even, there could be an entrance into this site too, the opposite from Imperial or one of the other roads, that then we could avoid the steep slope construction of the driveway, which is going to be very costly. And I also, lastly, while you were speaking about the environmental considerations for a project like this, this, I'm wondering if there's any concerns about disincentives coming from the federal level about paying attention to environmental concerns and saying it out loud. And maybe that's not something that's even trickled down to us yet. But every time I listen to the radio, there's another story that I think, well, that could never happen. So now I, I don't, I don't say that anymore.
I can address the, the ODOT question with access through their site. We worked on a MOU with them in order to get access through their site to do some geotechnical investigation. And during that time, I proposed the idea to make it so that in inclement weather, emergencies, we would have access through their site. And unfortunately, ODOT wasn't interested in that in allowing access through their, their site. And so I think the proposed driveway with the help of the team of HHPR and SCA and the Geotech, I think our driveway, you know, right now, it looks pretty daunting as far as how steep it's going to be, but they've done a great job of getting that slope down to a manageable percent. I think they've got it under 10% now. And super excited about getting a contractor on board to help with that final design because I, I don't remember which one it was and wouldn't matter. But one of them had proposed in their proposal that they were going to explore the idea of a heated driveway. And so that's what I've been, I've been wanting to, let's figure out a way to have a heated driveway so that in the inclement weather, the ice storms and snow, we could still access the site, so.
Yes, certainly. Engineering of steep slopes is possible. It's just costly, I guess, was.
And I, I don't think the, is, and maybe I misunderstood you, so I apologize. But having the only access off of 205, I think, would be pretty problematic just because.
No, I wasn't thinking.
Okay, okay. Did you want to?
I'll try to answer the first question about the fire hazard and sort of slope stability stuff. So yeah, it's a steep site. And we've, I think, kind of threaded the needle a little bit because there's not that many ways that you can sort of get a building of this size accessed off of slalom on that steep of a slope. Landscape-wise, we've got a pretty, I think, responsible and in the end, beautiful strategy. We're calling it a kind of successional planting strategy. So essentially, it'll take years to come in, but it's a mix of grasses and flowers and trees, conifers, deciduous trees, because we will have to scrape most of the site, unfortunately, just due to the steepness of it because to grade those kind of roads requires that. As I said earlier, we are doing everything we can to preserve as many of the existing trees as we can. And we think we'll be able to preserve a number of them. But most of the site will be, will be graded. So we're coming in with what we're calling a successional planting, which essentially kind of heals that, that relationship between the kind of regraded site and the kind of existing forest that's around it. And eventually, it will be kind of a self, a self-governing landscape. So mostly native plantings, stuff that can survive well when it's dry, doesn't need excessive irrigation. And so in that way, can stave off, I think, any imminent fire danger. But in the years leading up to its kind of stability, it will require irrigation. It will require management. But, you know, we've got Parks and Rec in the building. So we hope that that'll work pretty well. I think Eric answered your question about the access off of 205, although I love the idea of, of, of enhancing the, kind of forming a relationship between the, the rest stop and the, and the public work somehow and having people use it as a place, a kind of another resource as part of, I mean, it sounds like an awesome project. Was there a third question that we missed?
Oh, it was just about the federal kind of rumblings.
Oh, boy. I.
I mean, I don't expect to actually answer that question, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're pursuing our projects with the values that we think are important and doing the best that we can and talking about them in an intelligent, positive way. And we're going to continue to do that.
Thank you so much.
I just want to do a quick time check. I'd like to wrap this up in the next five or so minutes, if that's okay with everybody, just to keep on the agenda time. So I'm going to go to Councilor Groan and then Councilor Bonington.
Yeah, how many people will be working at the center at its peak?
Okay, so between parks and public works, there'll be 50, 55 people.
Okay, I presume some of them will, might now and will eventually have electric vehicles as well. And we'll probably want charging stations as well.
Possible, yes.
Okay, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bonington, please.
So I also thought that heated driveway idea is pretty neat and practical. But while, while we're digging, obviously, to place the foundation, is geothermal an option perhaps to make that work?
That would be a question for the Geotech. I don't know that we've had testing where we have the geothermal water. I know that was a big thing in Klamath Falls at Oregon Tech down south, but I don't believe we have that kind of groundwater on the site. But great idea.
Great questions. Council, Councilor Bright, then I'll finish it off with a question.
So just real quick, the PGE program that I was referring to is called dispatchable standby generation. And it's, it is a very good financially feasible partnership for having a generator there that they actually provide the fuel. So even in an emergency, they would come and fill it up to extend. So, even in an emergency, they would come and fill it up to extend that time that we would be able to operate on generator power.
One more time, what was it called?
Dispatchable standby generation.
Oh, okay.
And then the other thing with regard to electric cars, with the size of our city, it's not like every electric vehicle needs to be plugged in every day. So, you don't really need a charging station for each vehicle, but you do need enough that vehicles can charge when they need it.
Thank you. Good points. My questions were just around, first of all, well, first a comment. I'm open to pursuing the LEED certification, if we can do it in a cost-effective manner, especially if we're already doing some of the things that could get us the certification. I don't want to do it if it's gonna be a huge cost increase. And just the question I have is just like, with regard to the sustainability elements of the design, are those gonna increase the cost of the project a lot? Or, how can we make sure that we're tracking the costs on everything with regard to the project to make sure that elements that we're inserting aren't making it a lot more expensive?
Yeah, great question, and I actually have an answer for this one. So, we're gonna have a pre-con services CMGC partner onboard, probably in six weeks or so. That's when we will get much finer detail on what things cost and where the cost is on the project. And that will, yes, it will make the project more expensive, as you said, to go down the LEED track, but the question is how much more expensive? I mean, it's probably around $100,000 just to register and track it, because you gotta pay someone to file, it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of back and forth with USGBC. But then there's the kind of cost category of all the features that you then either change or add to the project in order to get all the points, to get you more efficient, more, you know, yeah. So, we will be able to probably provide better, sounder financial information on that soon, but we don't have it yet.
Cool. Well, we'll look forward to seeing that at some point in the near future. I think it's a smart thing to be looking at that, I can't remember the title of, but the plywood framing of the building instead of steel, especially at a time, can you imagine if we were looking at steel? For our little art project, it went up, it doubled the cost of the art project, and so, I think that's a smart idea, and looked great, and looked like a very beautiful building, and more importantly, will perform a very important function for our city, keeping us ready for events. And I especially like the idea of people being able, when they, when you have the winter weather events, they can actually stay if they have to, in quarters, to be able to respond to the emergencies that arise. So, with that, I will close out this discussion, and thank you all for coming, for all your work on this very exciting project. And I think a council tour of the site is in order at some point in the near future, since we're gonna start talking about contract awards and actual construction soon.
You bet. I haven't forgot about that, just trying to wait, wait to make sure that we have nice, warm, dry weather, and nobody's sliding down the hillside.
Absolutely. Sounds good. Mr. Williams, anything else on the topic from you? Okay, well, we will, I guess, would you like to close, Eric, with just the next steps on when you'll be back to us in the future on this, in your opinion?
I believe we're on the agenda, and maybe you can check this, John, but I think June 19th, we're coming back with the award for the.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yep.
For the construction manager, general contractor.
Sweet.
So, soon, trying to move, keep that moving.
Wow.
Is there any other milestones that?
We're gonna be meeting with the neighborhood independently of this group, but Neighborhood Association meetings are coming up.
Yeah, I don't know, do we have a date for that? I know we're meeting, with the land use portion process, we're pulling three neighborhood associations in together with one meeting, as far as the application, but I don't recall if we have a date for that yet.
I would like to attend that meeting.
Okay.
Please let me know when you do find a date.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for those updates, and we will be in touch, look forward to June 19th, or June 16th, excuse me, not June. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, we'll move on to the next item, and then we'll take a quick break. The next item is the Tree Code Technical Amendments. So, Mr. Williams, this is not the big Tree Code discussion, quite yet.
This is not the big Tree Code discussion, but this is a very important piece of the puzzle. Megan will explain the difference between the big Tree Code and this Tree Code, and will also introduce her team, which includes our city attorney, Kaylee Klein. These folks have been working hard to update the community tree ordinance, to make it easier to administer, to make it easier for staff and the community to understand what's in here, and to make sure we're compliant with relevant law. So, Megan is going to start us off and introduce the team.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers for having us here today. This has been a long time coming. I think I've spoken with each one of you about working through the Tree Code and understanding how to make it function better, make suggestions to function better for the community, as well as this arborist here. I would like to introduce our team. Mike Perkins, Parkinson that you know, he has been filling in since our last arborist retired. As a city arborist, I've been completely indebted to him, to teaching me and showing me what, how it's working and what improvements are needed. Kaylee has been very instrumental, is helping us, making sure all our legal considerations are in place, as well as the city's, for the city's risk. And then Todd Prager is our resident expert here. I'd like to give you a little background on who Todd is, I don't know if you know, but Todd is a registered consulting arborist. He's an ISA board certified master arborist, as well as an ISA tree risk assessment qualified arborist, and is also part of the American Planning Association. He's also our consulting arborist that we have on hire right now to help us through this transition, as well as to potentially be our ongoing part-time arborist as we move through. We could not have done this work without his expertise, as he's been known throughout all of the agencies around to help support them. If you want to go ahead, oh, do I have, I have the power in the tool here? Let's see. So, I'd like to give you a little bit of background. The Community Tree Ordinance and Manual Guide is how the city manages and preserves and regulates its trees. These documents are essential to our urban canopy, supporting development, ensuring public safety. However, they haven't been kept in pace with state laws, industry practices, and implementation challenges. Over the past year, I've been able to observe and talk to residents who applied for trees, talk to the front staff, desk staff, who are answering questions, and work really closely with Mike on things that are just questions that have always come up, and so, that's kind of what led us down this road. Oh, didn't realize I was doing that. So, the purpose of this review is to take an overview of the proposed technical updates to the Community and Tree Ordinance and Tree Manual. These updates are focused on legal compliance, administrative consistency, public safety, and operational efficiency. So, one thing that we always want to make sure, it's not just for our staff needs, but really, truly, the community benefits. The alignment of legal requirements will ensure that the Tree Code complies with the current state and local regulations, a clear process for approvals and appeals, reducing the ambiguity of the code, making it easier for community members to understand how decisions are made and how to navigate the appeal process, improve the overall Tree Code process by streamlining the procedures, making more efficient use, and friendlier use for both staff and for the public. Through this process, it's taken quite a few people, as it realizes a Tree Code impacts a lot of departments, as well as the community. So, I would really like to thank to the planning staff, engineering, building, code enforcement, our legal counsel and our outside legal counsel for all of their feedback and review. In collaboration with the group here, and then, the main goal for this was to focus on technical updates, not major shifts to the policy. So, the goals for the updates are a little bit redundant from what I said, but keeping in mind that the state law updates to reduce the legal risk, making decisions more predictable and transparent, through streamlining permit processes and clearer rules, and especially around tree removal, hazard prevention and mitigation, and making it easier for residents and applications to navigate the system. So, as we looked at these technical amendments, I wanted to ask council if you would like us to go through each section to kind of briefly discuss that, or to go, just to ask how you would like to, I have not done this before, as far as amendments go, so I'd like to ask what you would prefer.
I didn't mind thinking of, are there any really, are there ones that are more technical or not as relevant versus ones that are really important that the community needs to know about? Maybe you could prioritize in that way, if it's possible.
Perfect. We, no, we can do that. We kind of came prepared for all, and I can give you, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of these technical amendments, just to start that off, and then we can go through a couple of highlights, and then the potential policy ones, I think there'll be some more questions on. So, the updated, the key highlights are the updated definitions for clarity and alignment of industry standards. You will see that through the definitions, you will see that through several of these to be able to, just outdated information and new science for taking care of trees. There's clarified rules and processes, especially designating the city arborist as the permit decision-maker. The appeals time limit and permit criteria are now more explicitly defined, which was very confusing, even just for the example of business day, how to describe when we have Friday off. We were able to find a definition to make it clear that any operating open business day of the city, in case our business hours ever change. Street tree language has been refined and reduced to conflict with other codes. And then, the fee reference is something that is aligned with the city's master fees. Currently, fees are written as zero, but there's master fees that could be considered in the future. So, when I'm looking at these, Todd, please feel free to chime in, do you want to highlight any ones that are of key, of high, for the, just the technical portion of this, that might be of significance?
And before you get started, Todd, could I jump in for just a sec? We just really want to take advantage of the opportunity we have with all of you sitting here today to have an active back-and-forth discussion, if possible, and if, to spur that, we need to kind of march through some of these changes to tease out questions, I think it's worthwhile, because I, we worked really hard on this and tried to stick towards truly technical amendments. I've never worked on a Tree Code before, but our outside counsel has, and, you know, we understand it can set off an alarm, and so, we really didn't want to take that approach and say that for another day. I do believe staff thinks the Tree Code as a whole needs to be opened up, but we were trying to stay more towards technical amendments, and even those seemed very important, like Megan was saying, the clarity on what criteria is gonna be used to deny or not deny a permit, how can I appeal it, risk in terms of what the city is responsible for maintaining or not. Those are all areas we tried to address. Some do cross over into policy, but we really want to make sure you have the opportunity to understand what we've done here, so when it gets closer towards adopting something, there's no surprises for you. So, please don't hesitate to ask any type of questions, or tease it out, and Todd, please take it away, and going through, even if it seems monotonous, I think it's worth queuing up what we changed and why.
Thank you, Kaylee. That was very helpful.
Council Bright, please.
I have always thought that it was very odd to say, the fee will be determined by the council, and the fee will be zero, in the same part of the code.
How do you feel about going through these? Is that, do you feel good about that? I mean, we talked about it, but I didn't know where this would go, so thank you, Todd. That was something.
Again, Todd Prager, I'm the consulting arborist on the team here, and thanks for having me today. I've worked on several Tree Codes throughout the region, worked for different cities as a consultant, city attorneys, and kind of went through your code with your staff here, who's been great to work with. And, yes, there's a number of technical items that we really wanted to look at in fixing and kind of updating, and that was really the intent of this whole exercise. But there's some really important items in here, just to run through. You mentioned about the fees. We didn't recommend changing fees, just allowing the city council to, as you do with other fees, review those as part of your annual fee review and determine what the fee should be, rather than just blanket saying zero, which I haven't seen in any other codes that I've worked on. So, that was one, even though it was technical, it is slightly a policy issue, too. The other thing that we really tried to do was draw a bright line between the Community Development Code, you know, which regulates development and tree preservation, planting with development, and then this code, which is separate from that. There's a little bit of mixing of the two in some of the language, so for technical purposes, we want to keep that bright line, so we're not drifting into land use regulations with this code, which is important for, your attorney can tell you reasons, but state law has a lot of different complications with changing land use regulations.
Yeah, I was just, that's actually what I was gonna say. It's harder for people in the back, I don't know why, because of the way the sound works. If you don't, can you hear the difference in my voice?
Yes.
Even just that much?
Okay.
So, thank you.
Sure. And then, the permitting, permitting submittal requirements was one of the biggest aspects of the changes that we recommended for a couple of reasons. One is because the submittal kind of standards that you have put a lot of reliance on your city arborist for making decisions, which normally are, you know, making, providing information and submittals that usually fall on the applicant. So, you're, typically, your applicant, you know, they have to demonstrate, they bear the burden of proof for demonstrating that a tree is dead, a tree is hazardous, it's diseased, rather than having the city arborist make that determination. And the reason that you don't want to have the city arborist telling people on, you know, private property that their tree is hazardous, is it, there's a number of reasons for that, but mainly, it's a liability issue. There might be things that your city arborist might not have seen, or didn't have the tools to kind of dig into, taking like a 3D image of a tree. It was hazardous, it wasn't realized, and then the tree falls, and then later down the line, it could create some liability issues. So, kind of putting that burden of proof onto the applicant was one of the aspects that we updated. And then, another one was, as far as the, and this is the biggest change, is the approval criteria used when you approve a tree removal. The criteria in the current code are extremely discretionary, in my opinion. So, there's two different arborists, and Mike and I went out, and we took a tour of different applications, and two reasonable arborists, which Mike and I both are, can come to different conclusions, and when you have a code, you want to avoid that, because it creates arbitrary decision-making, and the public doesn't have predictability, both applicants and the public. So, what we really tried to do was take your current criteria, but make it much more objective, and something that two people could really agree upon, almost any arborist could. So, that was the main thrust of this, these amendments, and I think that hits the high points, from what I saw.
Yeah, one I'd like to add in there is, currently, it says that we are not allowed to seek out the applicant to seek a third-party arborist to give us an arborist report. That was one that's been very difficult, if we see, you know, as Mike has gone and looked at it trees, or I have, if we can't see the deficiency and there's a true concern, giving that homeowner the opportunity to have somebody who can do a full tree risk assessment evaluation and give us a form to take that into consideration. That's one that I think that has been really key for Mike and I, of having that shift, of having the option. Doesn't have to be required, other agencies do, but just for this technical piece, at least giving us the option and gives the homeowner a chance to have a second review. I'm trying to think of what else additional. There's a little bit of language in there about the street trees, but that was kept very clear lines, like Todd had mentioned, for the CDC code. And it also, it gave some clearer lines for the appeal process. We didn't even have, we don't even have a form currently for an appeal, and so, that's one thing. There's also, besides this technical review, there's some process changes that we'll be working on as well, to make it clearer, so we can track better for record-keeping, as well as giving a full process to the community. See if we have any questions on those, just baseline to start? There might be more that come, go ahead.
No, I was just looking at the, the current tree removal criteria, and how it's, the language is so wild right now, where it's like, basically, any, it says like, the following shall be considered as asked. shall be considered as aspects likely to warrant approval of a tree permit."
Yeah. And then you get down to the section below, and it says, "Aspects that might, might warrant a denial." But is it like two, two to three ratio, is it one to one? That's where it's really ambiguous of not knowing how you respond. And I can understand from the homeowner, they want to know why we denied a tree. So Todd's added some good language in there to help clarify that for everybody.
The question I have is on the fees.
Yeah.
And kind of, I guess that's a council decision on what fee to set at a different, probably during the budget cycle that's coming up, but what are other cities charging for that? And it would be kind of cool to have a situation where if we're charging for a fee to take down a tree, the money goes to some sort of tree rehabilitation program, or something cool like that.
I have some notes, I don't know if you have more on the back of your thoughts on it. I have quite a few different agencies. Well, so we currently have a fee schedule that's in our master fees. It's been updated every year, I updated it this last year, and every agency goes about it a little bit differently. I looked at Wilsonville, Wilsonville has, you know, one to three trees that you can remove for $25, and there's a different fee if you go over that. Milwaukee has a $25 processing fee, plus a $50 fee for additional trees. And Tigard has no fees for, for single property, but then when you get to development, there's fees. Lake Oswego has, you know, no tree for invasive or emergency, but for a debt or hazard is $20. Right now, our current fee for a tier one, and the tiers are a little, would need to be updated as well, is $25. That's for a permit that would just be processed, that we have enough information to determine it, just sitting at the desk, that it's approved. And for tier two is $65, where it requires site visits, and then it goes up from there if we have to do mail-ins and out. A lot of that gets, ends up getting determined for either whether the fund goes to support the arborist work that occurs, or if there is a mitigation requirement and somebody wants to pay to not have to plant the tree replacement, that that could go into a tree bank or a tree fund, kind of like what we have right now. So there's a lot of different options out there, and I think it depends on what our city's end goal is for that money. Usually, it goes back to support the arborist work as well. Do you have anything you want to add, Todd?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, too, that those are kind of two different things often in codes that we see is, the permit fee goes to the administration, you know, the cover of the staff time that's involved, but the mitigation fee, if you, if you don't plant a tree and you're paying, then that goes to plant a tree, and that can be much more costly, you know, the $500 range, because it's pretty costly to plant a tree. It's more complicated than just sticking a thing in the ground.
Yeah. Hopefully, that answered, that was a lot of information I threw at it, yeah.
Yeah, the one other thing, a question, any other questions from the council? Okay, the one other question that I had is, if you have a development review application that comes in, and they want to cut down, say, 10 to 20 trees, is that processed differently than, would these fees apply to the mitigation fees?
Yeah, Mike, do you want to answer to that, since you've been doing a lot of those?
Well, that's, that's usually, that's through the CDC initially, that the rules that apply to the, to that, doesn't really have to do with the municipal tree ordinance.
Interesting.
And an interesting part, though, with the CDC code, if a developer goes in and says they're going to remove 10 trees, and they get their area designed and realize they need to redo 10 more, the current process is they fill out the same application that a homeowner would, it's not tied back to their, their actual application, and that's another area that we would like to fix over time, to be able, it's more transparent for the community around who receives a notice, and also it kind of streamlines it for the developer, too.
And I think you may have that queued up, but I think that's a loophole, essentially, that people are noticing as a concern. That isn't captured by this type of permit process, it's in Darren's world with the CDC, but that's also ripe for some discussion.
Thank you. Very interesting how we have all these different code sections regarding trees. Glad we're having this discussion. Would you like to continue with your presentation? I didn't mean to.
Oh, no, that's, this is exactly what we were hoping for. The next slide I have up is the, the policy considerations. And again, like Kaylee had mentioned, this isn't trying to do large policy changes, but they are, there's still a policy change. The first one was obviously the master fees, that we talked about zero, streamlining with the CDC, which we had mentioned. And then the, let me see where am I at, with the application requirements, the arborist report that we already discussed, kind of already teed this up. And the permit process, clarifying the notifications. I'm just trying to think if there was anything we can add to that one, because that was a little bit, the notifications process.
Some of the changes for the notification involved kind of updating them, so the notification could occur through email and through your city website, rather than having to do as much through US mail and posting signage and that sort of thing. There still will be those requirements for some higher-level reviews, but for more routine correspondence, you know, people generally like to correspond through emails, it's faster and it's more efficient. So those were some of the updates, but I don't know if Mike, if anything to add.
No, that's taken a huge amount of time over the years, sending out hundreds of letters to people and not getting really much response back.
Go ahead.
But there still will be some, because I know some people don't have access to computers, I don't want to, okay.
Yeah, I think it's just, we were looking at, over time, updating the criteria for it, so that when it's really warranted, it's not super clear now. So there are a lot of cities, Lake Oswego has this as well, where they not only would do notifications if a sign was out, but they do have a website where you can go and take a look and see where the tree applications are, what's been approved, what's in process, when the appeal process is. And that's kind of lofty for us, but that's something that we look forward to doing. And we are looking to update the application to be online, as well as our paper copy, so that will help streamline. But I'll talk to Mike, and if he has like four or five signs to put out, and depending on the day and the time period, it has to go out, what, 10 days out? And then 20 days, or another 10 days, and he has to go pick it back up. And so there's just a lot of efficiencies that can be had, that, and also we're looking at to not have our arborists do that, that's more of an administrative function. And other communities have the homeowner come and pick up their sign and put it posted in their yard. So we're just trying to see how we can make our process more efficient. Any questions on that part? Okay. So, oh, I didn't pull all of them up there, let's see. Heritage trees were another area that was pretty significant. I don't know if you realize that any heritage tree that is designated is fully of the ownership and responsibility of the city to manage and care for. Not that that isn't, that's just a council decision, if that's where we want to spend our time and efforts. Usually, there's more of a partnership with those trees in other cities. We do have 10 currently, and we have just performed some pruning, pruning on one of the heritage trees recently. But that's an area that we were hoping to see what you would think of improving. Anything else for one of you on this? Oh, I have a good one.
Yeah, I'll just add to that one in the heritage tree section. You'll see that we proposed edits where if it's on, where if it's on private property, the owner's responsible for maintenance, and after receiving approval from the city, whereas if they're in the public right-of-way or on public property, we're responsible. That mirrors City of Portland's tree code, where you're just making sure you're, you know, allocating risk appropriately. So, you know, those are important trees to manage, and that's something that I think is worth you considering, whether we want to separate responsibility in that manner.
Is that applying retroactively to the current list of heritage trees, or going forward to new ones? I'm only asking because I could see a situation where people who have a heritage tree on the property now are all of a sudden on the hook, and want to make sure we're collaboratively communicating about this.
Yeah, that is a great question, and you're going to law school, I can see why, make sure people have proper notice. That's something we're going to work through, we wanted to flag this and figure out whether we, you know, think notice is appropriate enough, or whether we do have to make it on a going-forward basis. So I'm going to look at how some of the other cities have handled that, when they've changed their code, and we'll make sure we have that more fully discussed before we come to you with actual language to adopt.
Thank you.
Any questions? I was going to talk about the street tree suggested list. Currently, we're supposed to have a defined street tree plan, where every roadside has a specific tree that's been selected, which we do not have, I don't know that we've ever had one, but a common practice is to have a suggested list of trees, and that tree list could be reviewed over time, based on if there's a species that we're deficient in in our community. You put that designation based on the size of the planting area, if it needs to be a wire-wise tree that's below wires. That would speed up the process for the homeowner to decide, the resident, for their application to be able to make a decision, as well as the developers over time, too, versus us saying, "You need to get this one singular tree," and then they can't find it of that specific size. So we're hoping to create some flexibility in that. And Todd has created a really great list from his resources all around, so something that we're looking to move forward with at some point.
Counsel Bright, please.
And in that list, do we have kind of a tendency to lean towards native trees? I don't know if there's very many native trees that make really great street trees, so maybe that's a problem, but just to have more native things, rather than bringing in a lot of native species.
It's hard to find natives that fit into that size with success with, with not only sidewalks and streets, but you do definitely get climate action concerns and worries that you have to do, adapt your tree list over time, and that is something that's always in consideration. Yeah.
Whatever you do, make sure that with the, with the street tree list, they're appropriate, there's some criteria to make sure they're appropriate for the particular spots, because in my neighborhood, when I was down in the Willamette area, they took out a bunch of trees that had limbs that would fall over during windstorms, and they put in some new trees, like 10 years ago, and now a lot of the roots have come up and messed up the sidewalks all throughout the neighborhood. And I've heard from folks saying, you know, "Why did they put these, mandate that these trees go in?" So hopefully, the future list will have be ones that are, don't have those type of root structures and situations that make them hazardous or annoying to the community.
I think that's what Todd has kind of projected with other cities doing the same thing, right? We have the risk of the sidewalk, too, not just only pervading the canopy, so definitely trying to get the right tree in the right place. And I think that's why when the list comes out, if we can move forward with it, we're kind of trialing it right now with people to see how they think of it, but it's based on the whole size, you know, so whether it's a four-foot bed, a six-foot bed, up to 10-foot and beyond, so then you can choose the right tree based on that criteria, so.
I was in the weeds there, I just had to say.
Oh, this is great, it's for everybody's learning.
It's in Westland. Anything else on this, that topic?
I had one more I'd like to chat with, if that's okay. It was apparent just a few months ago, or maybe a few weeks ago, that we had a situation where we needed to essentially revoke a permit, that the information was not fully truthful when we received it, and we had no means of doing it, or doing a stop order on it. We've worked with Nicola on, with code enforcement on that, and so it was suggested we take a look at the building code, and that's the non-compliance, the 8.740. Just that puts in there an opportunity for us to stop a situation, in case there was an error made, even it could be by us, to we can take a pause and relook at the situation.
Makes sense.
Realize there wasn't one for us to do so.
The city's been here for 100 years, and we haven't been able to stop one of these, that's something.
Okay, well, on to the tree manual. I didn't put nearly as much detail in there. It is a very large manual. I will have to say, Mike was here when that was implemented, it didn't get quite the review that he had hoped, it was started from Palo Alto, street manual, and we've updated it. Todd did a great update on it, and essentially, it's reflecting what you're seeing in the code changes. I know for me, one of my main key points with that was that it is a technical guide for the practitioner, so arborists to be able to use, so for somebody installing or pruning, it's updated to the ISA current standards, and then just getting the terminology and best practices updated. Want to see if Todd has anything else you'd like to add to it.
Yeah, and again, in the manual, it was about making sure that the burden of proof is on the applicant, especially for the development piece of things, the project arborist submitting things, and that's their role, and then the city arborist reviews and approves, or approves with conditions. So just setting that kind of expectation, which is typical of most codes in the region.
Thank you.
One thing that I realized when I got here is we would get calls and say, "I need the arborist to come and evaluate my tree in my yard, I think it's going to fall." And that's one thing that we've kind of limited, as far as we are not qualified to be evaluating their risk, right? And so we have, then would, you know, take them to the ISA arborist website, where they can look for somebody to help come and do that evaluation, but that's one area that had been kind of a habit that we are pulling back from, because it's, it's not fair to the homeowner, and it's very risky to the city. So.
Quite a liability there, wow.
So that's the end of our presentation. I really appreciate you taking the time. This was a real deep dive into kind of what we could do, and phased approach for making our risk, well, first off, for the residents to know what we're approving, and how we're approving, and why, but also really evaluating the city's risk. And so I really appreciate everybody who's given us support in working through this.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Team, Counsel Bonnington, please, he has a comment.
Something came to mind for me, which I know we've dealt with before, but we've had numerous complaints where PGE's contractors will come in without warning property owners, and basically just mangle their trees to keep the power lines in check. Have we modified any, any processes to make that process go a little smoother, so that we're not getting these enraged residents who wondered why we, we killed their beloved tree when we didn't?
So, I don't work directly with PGE, I don't know what agreements we have with them. I'm very aware of their tree pruning tactics, but I don't know who oversees the, if anybody with the PGE contract that we have with them. I do know, my previous location, we did have an agreement of knowledge that they were coming, but that we don't really get to mandate, as they own the property, or they own the space that goes around the, the wires. Does John or anybody else know?
I would say, I suspect that the Oregon Public Utility Commission regulates pruning around wires for safety reasons. I'd have to look up the statute on that, but I'm almost certain that that, that is one of the reasons why that's occurring. And so, where are you going to add to that, John, or?
No, I appreciate that. I, thank you for that question. I think we can all get that question answered offline, and come, when we come back to you. I wonder, I don't know if there's any ability to regulate what they do, keeping with what Kaylee just said, but we can look into it.
I was told by a PGE forester at one point that they have a federal mandate on, it's a Department of Homeland Security thing of keeping a 10-foot clearance on power lines.
Yeah.
Well, they haven't met the City of Westland yet. We'll see about that.
I do know, though I have referred people, and I've called myself on the, like, in Lake Oswego before, and called their hotline and got ahold of somebody, and did have some response. And so that's one thing I have encouraged others to do. I know that's not always easy, but it's still at least as a resource. And we've dealt with one, I think, down near in the Bolton neighborhood, where they had turned a Doug fir into a little tiny pencil.
Yeah, I recall that one. Perhaps if we can't completely regulate what they do, we can have some way of making them be more thoughtful about it, because it seems, not that we want to put the blame off when we get these calls, but we actually do want to protect our residents' trees, because they, they care, so.
Yeah, and I think one thing, too, is always evaluating, we have to look to see where the tree is in placement underneath those wires, and so that's what we try to promote, plant the right tree, you know? So yeah, no, I think it'd be great to find that information out, I was wondering that myself. Thank you.
Counsel Bright, and then I will pose the final question to the council.
And I think in not just talking with, or looking at the contract with PGE, but there's also contractors coming through for cable companies that have overhead cable service as well.
Thank you.
So the question in the agenda packet for the council options are, do we want to provide feedback and direct that the ordinance and manual be brought back for adoption at a business meeting, or either at the next available meeting, or following a public notice-to-common opportunity? Or do we need more information before we take that, or do we need more information before we take that step? Sorry, I wasn't speaking in the microphone there. But how do, how do folks feel? Are you comfortable? I think it's a good idea to, if, if time is not super of the essence, to send it out for a quick public comment, a notice period, and then we can bring that back for adoption, and over the summer.
Yeah.
So it looks like there's consensus on that, so we will have that brought back at the appropriate time. So we will have that brought back at the appropriate time following a public comment period.
That sounds great.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work on this.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, apparently there is someone online who wishes to make a public comment on this topic.
Excuse me. I didn't I didn't realize that. We let's hold up. We're not done with this topic quite yet because we've got a community member who wants to make a comment and perhaps has something we could fold into the manual, the first public comment on the topic. Mr. Barteroni? Bataroni, can you hear us? Let's see. Looks like you're unmuted now.
Yeah. Thank you for.
Hang on one second. We we are having trouble hearing you.
Trying to speak, but you can't hear me.
We can barely hear you. Are you close enough to your microphone? I don't we can.
Yes, I am. Sorry about that.
There we go. There we go. Hi there.
Great. Yeah, thanks.
Sorry. It took a moment to get.
The advisory board, and thank you for handing me here. I couldn't attend in person, but I just went to make comment about the the tree code and how important that would be for our community. And to to see how how this city is preserving and and taking attention to what is important also for our environment.
Oh, the okay, thanks. So you're just expressing support for the the tree code?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we will document that in the minutes, and we appreciate your support for those amendments. And we're going to be having another conversation in the near future about the other side of the tree code for the community development code. And we'll we'll keep you posted about that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Glad we got you in there. Thanks for waiting. Okay. Well, with that, thank you, Director Big John and all of our tree code team and Kayla as well. And we'll move on. I'm going to call a quick five minute recess since we're almost at the two hour mark, and then we will go into the next topic with Mr. Chris Myers. Can you believe that the city was going out and assessing private property on the streets? That's just, that's crazy.
And the city had that dead tree that fell on Tiltson.
Yeah. We should have that. Probably sorry.
Yes, for a total amount of lives that isn't even being judged so due to insurance tables versus elder.
Okay. I will wait to say that we're ready to go on your end and back in the back. We're ready to return to session. Thank you, everybody. Very robust meeting today with a lot of topics on the agenda as always at the Westland City Council. Next on the agenda is very exciting, the Vision 43 project update. And I will turn it over to John Williams to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Myers, our associate planner, is here for another update on Vision 43. And this one in the packet had three questions, I believe, specifically outlined. So we will see if we can council direction on each of these. And Chris will provide a project update for us as well. So Chris, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, John. Mayor Bailestovski, Council President Baumgartner, councilors. Appreciate your time this afternoon. Trying to find that sweet spot on my volume here. Yeah, so today we are going to walk through a few questions. We're reaching the point in the Highway 43 project where we're going to start needing some council direction. We need to somewhat finalize our focus area boundaries as well as start walking through some of the policy questions that we have to help guide our consultant consulting firm MIG in their drafting of the mixed use code that will eventually be hopefully adopted. So we're kind of getting into the nitty gritty now, and we'll need to start working on that. So that's we're going to start today. The first topic is going to be removing focus area two. I'll get into that here in a few minutes. And then we're going to talk about the boundaries of focus areas one through four. There've been a few expansions and changes, and ultimately it's up to council to give us a thumbs up or thumbs down that you like it. Yes, sir.
So.
Uh, no, no, no. I'll show you on a map here in just a just a just a like two minutes, counselor. And then there, as I said, we'll be starting a string of work sessions where we're going to have some policy questions for council to answer that will help MIG and guide them in their ability to write the code. They have a good skeleton of the code right now, but a lot of what they can't do is because they need actually our direction as to what they want or what we want. Briefly, just in case there's someone watching this who doesn't understand what Highway for Vision 43 is, I'll give a quick briefing. As you can see here on our map, from Lake Oswego to our I-205 overpass is our Highway 43 corridor. And this project, Vision 43, as council knows, is all about looking at and making changes to the land uses that we allow so that future development will be more in liking to what we would like and what's good for our community here in Westland. You know, so here we are. We're out to create a new vision for the 43 corridor. We've been engaging community members and neighborhoods to help craft the recommendations that we're going to have. I think I'm I'm at about 47 different events and such. I believe I promised 30, so we've gone over that. And now the goal's 50 plus, so we're pretty excited about that. Improving opportunities for walking and bicycling within the corridor and to the corridor, as well as creating more opportunities for businesses, housing and gathering places. And then, of course, the bottom one is updating our plans and policies, sort of making the sausage. So we started this project in October of 23. We started really heavy engagement in that at that same time, running through this past December, but we still have engagement going on now and and through the summer and into the fall. So we'll continue to engage with the community. But now we're actually we'll be taking folks something that they can look at and see and touch and feel and love or hate or whatnot. So the mixed use draft code is in process now, as I mentioned earlier. And then we're hoping right now for project adoption in December of 2025. We've been working under the mantra of it is better to do this right than to do it fast. As we remember from our tour in June in Lake Oswego, as Sid Sodaro mentioned, from Lake Oswego, you know, the vision document for that development we toured started in 1986, and it took 35 years ish to complete that. So we really want to make sure we get it right this first go around instead of trying to hustle through and get it done fast. We all want it done fast, but we want to do it right. So that is a very quick briefing on Vision 43. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about those focus areas. So you may remember, we initially started with four focus areas, and we are at this time recommending removal of focus area two. Focus area two, and I'll actually it's here on screen. It's in the rectangle. Focus area two, I'll get closer for you, is the Westland Lutheran Church property. At the time when we were starting this project, there there is a current trend of large religious properties developing low income housing. Our code at the time was really going to be a barricade or a barrier for that happening. So we discussed putting that site into the Vision 43 project as an opportunity to maybe for someone for someone in the future to develop some low income housing. Now, with the changes to state laws and city codes, we actually don't need to make that change. They have a pathway through to create low income housing if they choose to do so. So we really feel like it clarifies the project, it keeps it clean, and it's just an unnecessary change that we don't we don't need to make. So our staff recommendation and the consultant's recommendation is to just remove focus area two from consideration and stick with three focus areas. So this is the first point in today where I'm actually going to kind of stop and 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 ask for a sort of a thumbs up, thumbs down, some thoughts on doing so. I don't want to move forward or I don't want to remove focus area two if council wants us to keep it in or vice versa.
Is there any controversy from or any objections to removing focus area two that you've heard from the church or other?
Thank you. Great question, Mayor Bielisowski. No, that this has been through the project working group. It has been through the planning commission, and now it has also been through the EDC last Thursday. And no one, no one at this time has taken issue with removing focus area two out. So I can say, no, I have not had any pushback.
Thank you for that. And I think Council Bright had a comment.
I was just going to say, at the working group, we had a pretty robust discussion about it and kind of looked at pros and cons, and and the working group decided there was no reason to leave it in.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't really feel like the future development of the site was going to be a mixed-use development. It was mainly to give them an avenue for some some housing, to create some housing if they'd chosen to.
Well, I is there a council presence? Do you have a comment?
I just think that sounds reasonable, and it's been discussed, it sounds like.
Yeah. So kind of a nod of heads or a consensus on that? Any objection to that approach? Okay.
Great.
Well, we've provided a first council consensus on Vision 43.
Yeah. So at that, at this kind of a mini pause point, I will say that this is a pretty robust agenda for this presentation that I have, and I know it's been a fairly sizable meeting for you as well today. When we finish with the focus groups, I'm sorry, focus groups, focus areas, I then have three policy questions as we start the policy question process. The end of the focus areas is a good stopping point if the meeting feels long. As I've mentioned previously, this took ninety minutes for the planning commission to get through their discussion and recommendations. So don't feel like we can't, we can certainly pause after the focus areas, and I can come back. I mean, I believe there might be room on the nineteenth, but I'm also scheduled for June, July, and so forth. So I'm happy to pause and come back with policy questions. And I, you know, I believe it's Council Bright. I can even put the questions out to you today and let you marinate on those and come back later. So just putting that out there. So you have that option.
I think the latter approach that you just said would be great. We'll get to the questions and then marinate on them.
Excellent.
And then, yeah, well.
I can't believe I just said that in session.
Well, no, no, it's a good, it's a good point. We got to stew on them, and that will give you an answer. We'll make you wait for an answer for a couple of weeks.
No problem. I'm happy to wait. All right. So let's move on to focus area one. So what you see here, the the blue dash lines are actually a product of the project working team and our council liaison, councillor councillor Bright. We sat down and went took a couple of hours to go through each of the focus areas and discuss some of the high points, if you will, and issues. So the blue dash line was the original sort of expanded focus area from the project team. The green dash lines with the red around them, those were additions by the working group. And then the planning commission didn't have any additions or subtractions, contractions from the focus area. So right now, this is the sort of generally speaking, proposed boundaries that we have. And I'll explain sort of some of the thinking here. We are trying not to take too many or take, we are trying not to rezone too many residential properties, as we realize that can cause some consternation amongst the community. We want to encompass all of the general commercial zones. It's one of the zones that we have challenges with right now. So we're also trying to create sort of a district where it's a it's a location that you'd want to go park or walk in and wander through. And so councillor Bright's advice, actually, I think was well received, was to was to move the focus area back to Old River Drive at the top of your screen and Walling and Walling Way to allow for a bit of a larger future district if wanted, if needed. And then, of course, Robinwood Station, which is on the right-hand side of your screen, the green dash lines, Robinwood Station is one of those three properties. Kind of makes sense to do them in a small group. Again, this is future use. We don't have any ideas or plans for next week or next year. And then the Walling Circle is obviously a bit of a, it's sort of right there in the middle. It's residential. Those properties are typically developed up on Walling Circle, but mostly vacated down, but not vacated, empty, just shrubbery and trees down off the highway. So it looked like the possibility that someone might at some point in time want to develop that. So we looped that in as well. But these are entirely entirely created through discussions amongst the community, the project team, the working group, and now the planning commission. So we're looking for feedback, expansion, contraction, thoughts, concerns. And I'll pause at focus area one, and let's talk it out.
Councillor Bright, please.
I guess my question is, we go out, we do some more public outreach, we show people these maps.
Yep.
And what if somebody? What if somebody sees that and? We'll try this. What if somebody sees that and says, well, why not me? Or why me? So we have an opportunity still in the community to adjust these as we get feedback, correct?
Yeah, that's that's the general concept is that we'd want to, you know, somewhat formalize those with council's feedback, and then be able to actually present them, put them on the website, ask questions about them and get feedback for sure. We also want to continue to highlight to people that rezoning your property doesn't mean you have to do anything. It just opens future possibilities, as we've talked about a lot in the last year and a half.
That's going to be an important communication point.
It is. And I think one of the other reasons we really want to nail down the focus areas is because then we can, we can start a process to specifically engage with property owners that would be within that boundary and have those conversations on a maybe a more personal level where we could bring people together in a small forum of some kind and talk to them as property owners that may have a zone change on their property and try to, you know, calm and assuage potential fears or concerns and hear them and listen to them. You know, we've done an extraordinary amount of public engagement, but no matter how much you do, you can never make everyone come to you. So we now can actually go out or will be able to go out and specifically speak to people. So, yeah.
Was there any discussion of kind of the area? I'm just thinking about like the, it's kind of hard to explain, but farther down down Willamette Drive on the, let's see, if the the south end, yeah, there's kind of some wooded properties. There's some apartments. And I could just think of, you know, years down the line, somebody wanting to potentially do something, revitalize that area across Marius Young and that.
Correct. Yeah, there's six different lots there. There's owned R-ten. It's a very challenging zone for those properties, and probably the reason they've they are still sitting undeveloped to this day. Planning manager Wise and myself and the project team, we've had discussions about that. We're having trouble connecting them to the current focus areas. But we could certainly put those into the mix as a zone change as we move through this process. We do agree at the staff level that that's a that those do need to get rezoned. The question really would be, what's that zone? You know, is it just a higher density for multifamily? Is it a mixed use? It certainly is something we could discuss.
It's something just to put out there. I don't know if I'm, I don't have the expertise to give direction to bring that, bring those in. But it's just like, I was, because I feel like I've seen a even sign saying for for sale. Yeah, for these lots are for sale. If we changed them up with the zoning to be able to do something cool, that could be a quick catalyst. We're looking for the catalyst to really revitalize the forty-three corridor. And it's something to think about that I just came to my mind looking at this map. And I really appreciate your thoughts on being thoughtful about the messaging around what rezoning really means. And it's can be a good thing for people actually to increase the value of their properties.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. And I'd say two things. One, the property that you're bringing up, those six properties across from Marius. We did have someone come in for a pre-application conference for cottage clusters, but it was a much larger development that that site will allow. And there's also a creek running through there, which flows under and into Marius. So that actually encumbers a big, about a third of the northern part of those properties. They probably need to be created as one, you know, as one property, developed as one single property, just to get some use out of that site. And then what I would say is, yeah, that mantra of better to do it right than fast, it's been coming up a lot because this code, you start to realize how important it is to do it right to get what we want. And so as fat, as much as we all want it done, I think we'd rather have it right.
Thank you. I would just like to point out, as you mentioned, Heron Creek, I'd be really interested in seeing what other communities have done with such a critical habitat as and protected watershed area that they how that's been done.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm guessing it probably has. So with things like that, I think it's a little bit more critical, like you said, to do it right rather than fast.
Yeah. And I know for me, I'm a personally a big fan of Marius and try and spend as much time there as I can. And in the in the spring thaw or in a heavy rain, that creek runs through Marius, and it is, there is a lot of volume moving through there very quickly. So you're right, it's a pretty significant flow rate, I would imagine, and really encumbers a portion of those sites.
Once upon a time, not so long ago, it had thirteen beaver dams on it.
Really?
In the park.
Oh, those beavers down in that ravine, huh? Those beavers.
Any other comments on focus area number one? I think it's, it's very exciting just to even think about this and see it visualized. And I'm appreciative of the working group and planning commission for the set of eyes on it as well. I think it's gotten a really good product towards us.
Yeah, admittedly, it's, it can be a little overwhelming when you start to get to the real tangible parts. The theory is kind of, we're done discussing theory, and we're getting to the, you know, putting the rubber on the road, and here we are. So it can be pretty overwhelming, too.
Is that Robinwood Station in there, too?
It is. Yeah. And the hash marks, that was, that was a working group discussion. I'm not sure if councillor Bright threw that one out. You did, didn't you? Yeah, councillor Bright threw that one out there. And it made sense to incorporate the two westerly properties to make them one larger space, potentially in the future, if someone wanted to do that, or at least the working group felt that way.
And last question on this, are there any areas from your professional expertise that you feel like should be added? Are you comfortable with the boundary?
I'm comfortable with it right now. I think it's going to be, the boundaries will be one of those things that when we start to see things develop, we may rethink the boundary or the code. Right now, it feels good to me. It feels like we're in a good place with it. It's a good size, but I don't feel feel that it's too aggressive. And it gives us or a developers, it gives developers in the future some options.
Good. Cool. Well, the question comments, questions and comments about the southern end, we'll resolve those in the future.
Yep.
And I'm any other comments from council on focus area one, or shall we move on?
We generally, okay, council's okay with focus area one? Fantastic.
Thumbs down, so.
Okay.
As long as we don't mess with Burgerville, I'm good.
I wouldn't dare. I have a thirteen-year-old son who won't stop eating. Okay. So this actually, this is a new one that just got to us with an addition. So this is focus area two. My apologies that it's actually kind of should have put it in the other direction. So this is the Bolton Firehouse is at the tip of that red triangle, the old Bolton Firehouse is at the tip of the red triangle. And again, you'll see, oh, that got changed. The initial boundary that the project team and councillor Bright came up with was everything you see except for the green lines, the added lines and blue lines. Again, the green lines were added by the working group, what, about three weeks ago-ish? And the blue lines, that was the only addition that the planning commission added, whatever that was, ten days ago. So the blue lines right there on Highway forty-three were a PC addition. What we tried here was on on Caulfield and West A Street, that space that says R-4.5, most of those properties are owned by one LLC, and it's an apartment complex, kind of these separated apartment complexes on multiple properties. So it felt right to add those as one one piece. We've had a lot of support from folks who own property and businesses around the intersection of Willamette Drive and West Day and Elliott, that they'd like to see an expansion of mixed use. Molly Makin is owns the at the corner of Willamette Drive and Elliott, she owns a real estate business. She would like to see, you know, more. So we've had a lot of support for that area. And then, of course, there's always the fact that we own the Bolton Firehouse, and there may be some potential future public-private partnership or city-sponsored project in the future, with discussions about Failing Street and maybe the property next door. So, I mean, there's some exciting possibilities here. And if I had to put money on what might come in as a development first, I might probably throw some money onto onto one of these sites. So I'd also, the last thing I'd say is, at the tip of West A and Willamette, that's Russell Williams owns that building. That's his insurance, his State Farm Insurance Company. He's a member of the EDC, certainly supportive of of the changes, has concerns about access and parking, you know, and parking standards and things like that, which are perfectly reasonable, but supportive of of seeing some different mixed use type things coming in. So.
And it's, it's interesting that that's owned residential also.
Yeah.
And that's kind of, I've, in the past, I've heard that's an issue where we've got some places need to be zoned, rezoned properly so that the business owners can do what they want with their property.
Yep. And you'll see that in focus area four, the next one, we have some more of those. We're cleaning up and getting those into the appropriate zone. So, yeah, but you're right, that's a good catch.
Additions or comments on this focus area number two?
Three.
Three, three, if you.
Three at this time.
Yep.
I'm not sure if we'll renumber or just have one, three, and four, and pretend two never existed. We just skipped it. I don't know.
Like large.
Yeah.
It's nice to look at something and just say, I think this boundary makes complete sense based on the surrounding characteristics.
My apologies. Remember, the high school is only, you know, what, not even a half mile to the south on A Street. So I think there, there would be, there is some hope that if that were to kind of develop with some interesting commercial or business entities, that might be a draw for students as well, because they already certainly will walk down to the Bolton area at lunchtime, as we can talk about that in the next one.
I hear no further comments or objections. So.
Seems like we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Continue on to number four.
Number four, our final focus area. Here we are in the Bolton area. For some reference, the to your right, the OBC zone, that is our library right there on Burn Street and the new law office that was built. Just makes sense to move those out of the office business center zone and put them into a mixed use zone. Obviously, Market of Choice is sort of the front and center in the red there. I will highlight, yeah, oh, that's, yeah, the OBC on the right-hand side on Garden Street, those are like, there's a Pilates studio and things that aren't really office-related. So it, again, kind of correcting some, maybe some old issues. I will point out the peninsula at the end of Garden Street, there's four or five residential properties right there. One of them's rather large. Those are all properties that you access from inside from Garden Street, not from the neighborhood. And that was one of the reasons that boundary is drawn there is those are sort of internal to the focus area already. That's where you would access those properties. Some other highlights to the right, yeah, to my left, to the left-hand side, lower side of the screen, the R-4.5, those, a lot of those are operating, I think there's a acupuncturist, either an accountant or a lawyer. So those are operating as commercial businesses right now in a residential zone, and they've been that way for a very long time. So we figure it's time to just call that what it is and move on from that. And then, of course, the the, you'll see more green slash marks. Those were additions to the focus area by the working group. Those are up on First Court and McKillikan. And then the little hash marks on Amy Street and Buse. The corner property, the larger corner property on Amy Street is already a dentist office. So it made sense to do that sort of half block as one unit as an addition. And then also on Amy Street, those are the properties that sort of look down on the Highway forty-three. They look down onto the gas station. And then there's the apartment complex kind of up against two-oh-five that also looks down. So those all kind of made sense as a potential future row of some sort of mixed use development. We have an ODOT property at the right-hand side of the screen, all right, up against two-oh-five that's being used as staging right now for the bridge. And then just a larger individually-owned property. The exciting part is this might be an op, this might be the time where our, what we call in planning, the Holly Street House is finally put into a zone where we might get something of value. Actually, the totally coincidental, the owner of that property, Danute Hodge, is a member of our project working Actually, the totally coincidental, the owner of that property, Danute Hodge, is a member of our project working group, community working group. And he is waiting to see what happens with the zoning before he does something on the property. So we might finally get rid of that eyesore and have a functional property down there off Holly Street, which is pretty exciting. So so that is the that is focus area four, probably the biggest, if you did it in an acreage. But also probably one of the more active spaces that we have. And I believe on the printouts I gave you, you can actually see the high school at the bottom of your printout. It's not on this slide. I ran out of room. But you can see the high school is only what, maybe three blocks? Three blocks up the hill from McKillikan and First Court. So there would be future potential for some, also for some businesses and getting some some draw of customers from the high school.
Could you, maybe I missed this earlier, but the the project working group additions on off of First Court, how did that come about?
Yeah, we had initially drawn, you can see the blue hash marks sort of cross halfway through some of those properties. There's a big slope there, if you kind of think back, that's a pretty big, it really kicks up to get to those properties up on McKillikan and First. And so we were thinking that the lower half of the properties might be a more, when we initially sat down and did this, might be a an easier place for development. But the working group really wanted to include all of First Court as a as a run of potential future businesses or development, I should say, not necessarily businesses. So that was, I don't know if you remember any of the details on that discussion, Counselor?
I think we were looking at it from the perspective of some, that first line was kind of halfway in, you know, through the middle of a property. So you would have a property that had two different zones, and that didn't really make sense.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Groner, please.
Yeah.
Make sure you turn your, there you go.
I was wondering if any thought was given to basically those properties across from the on A Street, across from the high school. It seems to me the high school could be a generator of business.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a little disconnected, but certainly it's a topic of discussion. I I would think that focus area three might one day grow grow toward the high school down A Street. But that might be like a another phase as we move, you know, as we move through the pro, through the years, as we see development happen. There's a lot of redevelopment that's just happened there in the residential world, though. There's eight new townhomes and a bunch of stuff that just redeveloped.
My father owned a store about a block from a school, and when school let out, there was a huge horde of
Yeah.
kids coming in for candy and stuff.
Oh, I bet, I bet.
I think that happens down near Market of Choice.
Oh.
I used to be part of that.
Yeah.
A horde of kids.
Those crosswalks get awfully full across the forty-three.
Yeah. Any other comments on this focus area? Or any, I see, I'm hearing no strong objections and I'm seeing nods of heads, so I think we can.
Okay, great.
Make some consensus on that.
Appreciate that.
Topic.
So then what I can do, if you'd like, Mayor, is kind of prompt you with the three policy questions that we'll talk about. And and we can, we can come back at the next session. I might even try and squeeze into the May nineteenth session because I could certainly do that. We're prepared to do so. So if you if you'd like, or we can just get into it, it's really kind of however you want to take it.
Looking around at my council colleagues. I think we, I think the idea of going through them, throwing out the policy questions, and then we'll revisit them shortly at at a near future meeting is is great.
Happy to do so. I will probably be here enough where you'll be really tired of me being here. So I have ample time and can easily bring them back.
Couldn't happen.
Right. Okay, so as I mentioned in my sort of preamble, the new mixed use zoning code is in its draft process right now. What the consultant has come up come up to is they need they need direction on certain policy questions. So I'm going to start a string of work sessions with council and with planning commission and council to bring you those questions and get your feedback on what direction we want to go as a community. I have three and we'll go through these, we can go through these. The first question is, should new development within the focus area boundaries be required to include include a housing component? As we know, we have a housing challenge and we hope that housing is part of some of these developments. So that's a big question. I I put in a contextual example, just Walmart is not demolishing or changing their store as far as the city knows. I just know that we all know where Walmart is, so it's an easy example to use. But if they were to demolish their existing store, would we require them to have housing as a part of a redevelopment? That's kind of a good, you know, a good way, good way to think of it. So that's the first policy question I would be bringing you. Should I jump to the second one or like?
Does Council want to have a question, any first questions on that, or do you should we just go through the the question? Just go through.
Okay, and these are in your packet for tonight's meeting, so you'll have you have access to them. So question two, should new development within the focus areas have a minimum height requirement of two stories? And this is sort of nudging away from single story development. Do we want to commit that we're going to do more? Do we want to leave it open to the developer? Right? We don't have recommendations on this. We're really looking for for some feedback from council. Yeah, again, I used Walmart. If they demolish and rebuild the existing store, should the city require the newly built structure to be at least two stories? That's that's really what it is. Pretty simple question. It's a simple question. It's hard to answer, though. Any clarifiers on that before I jump into the third one? No? Okay. And then the third one is, should new development within the focus areas be required to step back the height of of new structures when immediately adjacent to a residential zone? I'll give you visuals for that. It's a little bit easier. The top one actually works really well. You've got a large, what looks to be maybe commercial slash multifamily structure. And they're adjacent to a house, housing development, so they're stepping back their height. Usually it's one story, which would be equivalent to ten feet. Also, the middle visual at the bottom is actually our project cross section. And you can see that on the right hand side of the screen is existing residential. And we've stepped down, our consultant in this drawing has stepped down the backside of that development. So that one, I don't think is going to be all that difficult to answer, but it is a question that we should, we need to determine, are we going to require that as part of the code, or is that just going to be developer's choice?
Counselor Groner, please.
Yeah, I for one would love to see sort of the pros and cons for each of those recommendations. I understand there are probably cons as well as the pros.
Sure, that's good. I'd be happy to.
I was thinking the same thing.
Happy to give you some something to chew on. Absolutely. Yep.
Not necessarily today, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe this is a silly question, but like, when you look at this, there's these sorts of examples of stepping back the structure. What's the advantage to the homeowner of that? I mean, because they're still having a two story structure. Are they getting some view advantage or some?
Usually you're talking about things like light and air circulation being a part of it, as well as that feeling of not having a really super dominant structure, looking down into your kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, et cetera. So those are some of the things that that come up.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
It's a, sorry, Tinner, it's a common practice in a lot of cities, as well as even downtown Portland with skyscrapers. And, you know, they have three stories and then you have to step back so the sidewalk doesn't feel, you don't feel so dominated. So it's it's a pretty common practice. But I'd be happy to throw together for all of these some some pros and cons, some some thinking points. And if I can get on the schedule for the nineteenth, I think that packet would be Thursday, which is more than enough time to do that.
Great. I think that is perfect.
Great. And that, I believe, is, yeah, that's everything I have for you today. So we can sit with those questions and think about them. I'll put more in the packet for your, the May nineteenth and and bring it back for some more discussion, if that works.
I I think I will work with city manager on scheduling, and I think from talking to him about May nineteenth, that there's open agenda for different exciting topics, so this will be one of them. Any final comments for Chris? I just want to thank you for the excellent community engagement and explanations of these different complex topics that that are very important to the community, and I know you're vested in it, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys having me. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. We'll see you tomorrow at the State of the City. It's another engagement event. Don't forget to add that to the count.
And thank you, Lynn, for all of your work.
Yes. Thank you, Lynn. Well, with that, what a great discussion, some good policy questions to chew on. Are you, what? Yep. Oh, yeah, we're still going to do this. Yep, we're going to move on to, we were questioning whether, how long that would take and whether we'd have time to get to this next topic, but we're going to do it. Mr. City Manager, what is this Community Advisory Group Work Plans and Council Liaison Roles Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, the reason my light was on was just to introduce that. This is a topic that goes back to your retreat. I mentioned at our last meeting that a team of staff have been working on trying to create a proposal for you on how you can communicate clearly with community advisory groups, provide direction and ensure that they know what the what the what the mission is and that council, staff, community and the CAG can all be on the same page. Alyssa and Dylan are some of the employees that have been working on this. One thing that we learned is that there are a lot of staff involved in liaising with CAGs. We didn't even really know until they held a meeting and there were too many people to fit in the room. So that was a good indication to us that we are spending a lot of time and effort on this topic. And the more clarity that we can provide, that you can provide, would be super helpful. And we do understand that you're looking to finish this meeting up. There's nothing that couldn't wait till the nineteenth here. If you need additional conversation, once you've had the intro from us, we'd be happy to, happy to do that, I'll say, for them. So Alyssa and Dylan, can you introduce the topic a little further?
Thank you. Good afternoon. We will try to make this introduction to the conversation brief. As Mr. Williams mentioned, at the twenty twenty-five council priorities, the council established one of your priorities to be to clarify community advisory group work programs or work plans. And staff are excited about this, too, as much as you would like to clarify communications and also streamline processes. We have been doing the same internally. So today, we would like to share some options that we've come up with. Dylan has done a really good job putting together some things that we can share with you and have you discuss or consider as an option to work with your CAGs. So your municipal code notes that community advisory groups shall have special projects in the subject matter area of community advisory group to which they are appointed. And so the council shall then provide direction when possible in the form of a work plan where the community advisory group can work on during or throughout the year. And so one of the things that we're proposing here is, and Dylan has worked on, drafting a sample of what that work plan might look like. The work plan for each CAG would be distinguishable, so they'd each be a different work plan, although some may have some crossover. They have been used in the past, and so we would like to talk about bringing them back. These work plans would be guided primarily by your priorities. The one you have currently right now is about thirty months, your priority list is about thirty months. So we're we're talking about anything that they are identified in your council priorities list, we would include in this work plan. And it would also incorporate the feedback that they have presented to you through their annual reports. So these work plans would help CAGs focus, and they would also help staff with staff resources and time. And we would also make sure that it includes reminders, as in requests for funding. Right now, your CAGs do not have allotted budgets for most of them. And so this would include how they would access or request budget if needed. And so we have drafted a sample. Dylan drafted this one for Sustainability Advisory Board. Again, this is utilizing areas that you have already identified in your council priorities, as well as the items that they have identified through their annual report. So that is one of the areas that we wanted to bring to you for consideration, discussion. The second one being assisting the council liaisons in communication with their, between the CAG and the city council. And so it has been requested before that there be some sort of a feedback form or a or the council liaison could take notes during a CAG meeting and then report back to the council. I think that might have been your recommendation. So there's a sample of that as well in your packet for you to consider and give us some feedback on the feedback form. So we've drafted that, and that is in your packet as well. And then the the purpose of this would be that if a council liaison is not able to make it to the meeting, that you would also coordinate with your chair, the chair of your CAG, and request that they fill it out for you so that you could have, again, just kind of continuity of communications about what goes on in the meetings so that you can report back in your council meetings. As mentioned before, there's no specific budget for the majority of your CAGs. And so as part of this previously mentioned work plan, you would be able to, the CAG would be reminded of how they can request funding. So, did you want to add anything? Okay. And please interrupt if you want to. Okay. And then as part of all of this, we did want to share with you what we are doing internally. This is, you know, we're welcome, we would welcome any feedback, but we don't need you to make a decision on. But we have been internally meeting, there's been, I don't know, I think we maybe had twenty-five or thirty staff member, members at these monthly meetings that we're trying to just basically streamline all of our processes amongst our CAGs. Let the staff CAG, or excuse me, the staff liaisons have a clear guide as to what their role is, what the council role is, how to conduct meetings. Dylan did a really great job of creating just a meeting setup checklist, right? So it's a really simple checklist that everyone is on the same page staff wise. The guide also goes over how to create your agendas, set up the recordings, what do we do for training for new members, quorum, vacancies, recruitment, et cetera. So and we've included those in the packet, just so you can see some of the ways that we're trying to streamline process and make the CAG and council liaison processes a little bit more streamlined. So we've included those examples as well. And so as we have are trying to improve our internal processes and policies to help standardize those CAG meetings, we are recommending and wanting to help you with your priority to consider streamlining processes and forms in your communications with your CAGs. So if you would like, please take some time to kind of read through this sample. We could start drafting work plans for each of the community advisory groups and bring them back to council for approval in a month or two. In the future, we would aim to coordinate the timing of it with the annual reports that we get back from the CAGs in December time and so that we could incorporate those with your council retreats. But right now is a really good opportunity because your council priorities are good for almost two more years. So the timeframe works out to let us kind of just work out some kinks and improvements.
Thank you for that overview and and report and for all the work. I was just going through the packet and it looks, everything looks great. Counselor Groner, please.
Yeah, I was, by the way, thank you. Clearly, a lot of work went into this, and I appreciate it. I was curious what you envisioned being in the budget for a community advisory group, what sort of items?
Well, events, there's a lot of them that want to do events. And, yeah, SAB kind of wants to buy T-shirts, you know, to do to go to events, see those little things here and there. And a lot of times, they're just figuring things out on their own. That's in my group. I don't know.
I can think of also consultants, right? Sometimes there's a project that they're working on that.
Yeah, SAB got a budget of fifteen thousand for consulting, that council did approve that a couple of months, a year ago now, probably.
Yeah, so it might depend on the priority that they that is identified.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bright, and then please.
I think we've heard in the annual reports that there are often times where they had a difficult time getting a quorum so that they could meet. And I think having this work plan where they know, if I go to this meeting, we'll be able to make steps towards. And I think having this work plan where they know, if I go to this meeting, we'll be able to make steps toward this goal, I think will help encourage people to attend the meetings.
People are looking for that direction and the efficiency and they want to see a product. They want to know they're spending their time on something worthwhile.
Great thoughts and agreed. And I think that, that I've heard a lot from the EDC in particular, that they really want to know what they, what they should be working on and that's been topics. So this will be a way to, for council to give some formal direction on that in the near future. Council President, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you both so much for doing all this work and all of staff who has also done work on this. I'm a huge fan of standard operating procedures and, and clear expectations and roles and responsibilities. So this is right where I'm hoping to go with all of this. Having served on several advisory boards prior to running for council, I did see various, you know, assumed expectations or lack of understanding, lack of clarity really impact in involvement. So I know that this will really benefit our groups and the work product that they're producing. So thank you.
And Council President, do you have any, the report out form was, was your idea from long ago? And now we find, we have a draft of one and I wondered if you had any thoughts on it. I think it's overall a great idea to have that so that the community groups can make sure they're getting what they want council liaison to report to the city council.
Yes, exactly. Just clarifying expectations for one thing, because every one of us is different who gets into a role of council liaison. So we might all have different ideas or different exposure to, prior exposure to an advisory. So just having some structure is really helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Bonnington, please.
This may seem like kind of a minor thing, but going back to my experience serving on them as well, there, there felt like kind of a, a large disconnection between them and council. And a lot of times people wouldn't have a clue who was on council. Before things changed around, there was never a, even a council liaison attending the planning commissions for the majority of the time I was on that. But it might be really fun to have like a community advisory group appreciation event where everyone can get together and be familiar with each other and, I don't know, once a year.
That is a topic that the CAG staff liaisons have been discussing. We haven't gotten into a ton of detail. We really want to make sure that we're getting some of our SOPs in order, but it is a topic that we brought up for maybe end of calendar year. Thank you.
It's a good time to also talk about this, these changes that we've made. If we do have that type of event, that's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, and actually in general, like anything that we are discussing here and that we're going to be rolling out, we want to make sure that our staff liaisons are sharing. So we're going to have our staff liaison share the checklist that they're using, right? And the guide that they're using on their monthly basis. So we want to make sure that we, as much as we can, we are overlapping the share of information.
Any feedback from the council specifically on the draft work plan? That was, I'm guessing you just took a sampling for the SAB, just to have one to show us what it could look like? And, and that was in the packet and we can also talk about that in a future meeting. But just wanted to flag that, that there's one in there and see if anybody had any comments. Or Mr. Digby, do you have any, that's your group, I'm guessing you helped put this together.
Yeah, I did. I just used the council's priority list and their annual report and obviously I'm on this board, so I know what they're interested in working on. And we would do a similar process for the rest of the CAGs. Using, I mean, it'd just be this kind of template letter with some changes to the highlighted parts for each one. And I do the same thing, check their priorities, the goals and maybe with the staff liaison, the council liaison to kind of make a draft plan. And then we could bring those, however many, eleven draft plans back to council at some point. Well, that was part of the process. We talked about maybe doing the draft plans and then having the council liaison and staff liaison bring it to the CAG, have them talk about the work plan and then bring it back to council to approve the work plan.
That is a great approach right there.
For this year, we were thinking of at least. And then in future years, we'll be more aligned with, you know, annual reports, work plans coming to council retreat.
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
So thank you. I think this is going to be great.
So our hope is that that'll be maybe a month or two, so summertime.
Yeah, it'll take some time for, to make the plans, to get, to hit the meetings and then come back. So take a little bit of time.
Well, thank you both and the city managers well for taking the time to put work into this topic, because I think it's been something that we've all wanted to see over the years. It's just been something that, based on staff capacity and things, we haven't been able to get to this formality. And it'll be very helpful. So I think what, what you just proposed is a good idea. And so we will, is there a consensus on the council to continue with the approach of that Mr. Digby and Alyssa outlined? Okay, so we'll, you can start working on the draft plans and circulating them with the groups and then we'll report back whenever they're, they're ready.
Yeah, and I do have one more question on the, the CAG meeting report back form. Our proposal was that council would use those when they're at the CAG to take notes, to bring it back to the next council meeting where they can report back. And if the council liaison is not available to make the meeting, they ask the chair to fill out the form and give it to the councilor. Is that an appropriate process?
Counselor Breck.
We could maybe even have little printed out things that we can write on and bring to the meeting.
Yeah, however you want to do it.
Yes, that was the idea I had in mind. I was, mainly I wanted to make sure that it wasn't just the council liaison's perspective that was being reflected in a reporting back, because that isn't necessarily maybe what the individuals on the advisory board wanted to highlight. So just to make sure that what gets reported back, it reflects what the advisory board wanted reported back, if that makes sense, rather than the individual council liaison's perspective. Because we all have our own individual biases and just kind of different ways our mind works. And if we're not asking them what they want us to report, then we might not, we might miss something. That was the idea.
I might have misunderstood before, so I apologize. Do you think it would be better for the chair to be the one filling it out? Or do you think it is a council liaison's?
I, the only reason why I didn't kind of phrase it that way is because I, I hesitate to assign more work to people doing an advisory role, because they're already maybe doing a lot. And then if we say, oh, here you have this other, but if they prefer to, maybe it could be in individual. But as long as it's agreed upon, I think that's really the main thing, is it's agreed upon at the meeting.
Counselor Bonnington, please.
We had a unique situation at a Parks Board meeting two months ago, I think, where the group agreed and voted on a recommendation they then wanted me to bring back to council. So I don't know, perhaps the, the recommendation or whatever they want council to know could be approved by them along with minutes or something? And then that way we know it's certified.
So maybe like at the end of the meeting, you kind of, yeah, talk about, between the council liaison and chair, like talk about the key points and say, because a lot of mine, mine does some action items at the end. Along with the action items, I say, these are my takeaways that I'm going to talk back to council and get some agreement.
Yes, it shouldn't take longer than five minutes, ideally.
Liaison chair, whoever, or I mean, everyone's talking, so everyone's agreeing on the points.
Right.
Okay.
That was the idea I had thought of.
I like it. Great discussion, everybody. So any, anything else on the topic of the work plans for CAGs? Okay, see nothing else.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll be in touch about that with staff. Thank you both. And to all the staff liaisons as well for their help and collaborating on this. I know it's a lot of, lot of work on extra assignment to serve the CAGs. So we appreciate you, all your extra work and all the community volunteers as well on the CAGs. With that, we have a very, projected to be very lengthy city manager report.
Nope, exactly the opposite, very brief. Thank you, though, for the opportunity. Dylan and Alyssa, thank you so much. I agree with all of your comments. This is one that we have been trying to push forward for a little while. And it was really your discussion at the retreat that opened the door for us to be able to do this. So we appreciate your attention to it. I do think it'll help with providing the clarity that we all need. So I think it's great. I will go very quick. Our next meeting, well, tomorrow night with the State of the City, it's already been mentioned. A reminder, the library is closing at four to set up. But our next business meeting is May twelfth. On there, we have the conclusion of land use appeal. We have housing production strategy adoption proposed and back to the stormwater manuals. These are all items that you've dealt with before, no big new items on that meeting. May nineteenth is currently empty and I'll talk to the mayor about scheduling a couple of things there, including perhaps some discussion of some of the budget topics that you've been interested in. And then after the nineteenth, you have budget meetings at the end of the month, working with the budget committee. I think most things I can just skip till next week, except tomorrow, the mini-market at the ACC from eleven to four, local vendors at the ACC, which should be cool. And I want to report that we have eighteen teams now for the Step Challenge. It's climbing each year. So my potential donation to the food pantry risk has gone up each year, which is okay. That's the whole point. It's not too late to sign up for the Step Challenge, though, if you want to do that. And I think I'll just leave it there for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city manager? Everybody feel comfortable with the, I know I want to just flag the State of the City speaking role for the council. I think the plan, I was talking to Kathy beforehand, we're going to have a table up for, at the, next to the podium where I'll be speaking. And after a couple of, we're going to give the Robert Moore Award and a couple, and play my video, that's the official address. And then we'll have a council come up and a microphone and we'll have a kind of panel discussion where the, my question will mainly be focused on, what are you excited about working on? Or what's your particular area that you're interested in? Or have you been doing, and I envision that we all have our different things that we've been focused on. So that's kind of the main question. Then we can have a back and forth about, about things for fifteen, twenty minutes or so. Just wanted to flag that for everybody. So looking forward to that. And with that, we'll see you all at the library tomorrow, if you'll be there. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned. What a long meeting today, but a lot of great discussion items and topics for the city. We're adjourned.
Of a quorum situation in the State of the City?
It's a notice.
Okay.